I call the annual town meeting back in session. I'll ask everyone to please rise and our Veterans Agent Ted Mulvihill will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of prayer and reflection. Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gentlemen, please remove your caps. Ladies and gentlemen, your hand to your heart. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Trying to Lord, you are a community of persons. In your mercy and grace, we gather this day for town meeting. Give us unity of heart and mind to consider the tasks and challenges before us today. Send us your spirit of insight to open our imaginations to prepare for what lies ahead. May we trust and share our convictions with enthusiasm and ask all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Ted. Please be seated. Couple of announcements before we get going. I've been reminded by the Clerk's Office that they're still working to compile email addresses, so if anyone wants the Clerk's Office, any town meeting member wants the Clerk's Office to have your email address, there is a form out on the table that you can fill out and submit to the Clerk's Office either this evening or send it into them some other day. That'll help them to send out notices and maybe reduce postage costs. Also, I've heard from several members who are interested in being considered for the Rules Committee for the coming year. Anyone who is interested in that, to recap, it's one member from each of the nine districts. Anybody who's interested, please send me an email. And my email address is up on the screen, I'm told. And I'd like to say that, like to have, anybody's interested, let me know by May 31st so we can get a committee put together and working. And if anyone has suggestions of topics that they think the Rules Committee ought to think about, please send those along to me also. And beyond that, I think that covers what we had by way of announcements. We're going to resume with Article Nine on the annual warrant where we left off the other night. And Mr. Slater, you have a presentation this evening on Article Nine and you have a motion. Is that right?
Correct, Mr. Moderator.
And what do you want to do first?
Let me do the motion first, if I could.
All right.
Article Nine, recommended by the Finance Commission, that the sum of $5,950,000 be raised from taxation and used for the following purposes: contingent upon the passage of Proposition Two and a Half referendum question pursuant to General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c) for a total of $5,950,000.
All right. And the breakdown of that is set forth on the screen.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And you have a presentation, Mr. Slater.
I do, Mr. Moderator.
All right.
Before I begin, I'd just like to note that Judy Langone from our commission has been out the last couple of days. She's been feeling under the weather and we all wish her well. With that, I'd like to begin my presentation. This is to talk about Article Nine, which is the contingent budget. I'd first like to talk a little bit about the process of how we got here and it involved, as you've heard in the past, the Budget Balancing Committee. And we had to use a little different process than we usually do. We started much early. We started right after town meeting last May. We began in June. We met frequently. We met on the average of every three weeks, exchanging information and, you know, good give and take meetings. Basic goal that we had was to eliminate our structural deficit. We knew we had one. We've had one for a number of years. We've been able to paper it over. We found out pretty quickly we couldn't do it this year. So one of the first things we did was to develop with the help primarily of Tom McCoy, our Chief Financial Officer, a five-year plan because we wanted to make sure whatever solution we had was a long-term solution, not a short-term solution. So we developed a five-year projection using assumptions that are based on historical averages. And I think what you're going to see is that there was a large gap between the future revenues and expenses, I mean, much larger than we even thought about when we first began the process. So if you look at, you know, the five-year projections, you know, without this contingent budget over a five-year period, we'd have a deficit of over $31 million. With this contingent budget, we'd have a small surplus of a little less than $200,000. But the number I really want people to look at is the $31 million deficit over a five-year In terms of assumptions, you know, we had assumptions for general government, we had assumptions for schools, we had assumptions for our utilities and for our shared services. And these are all based on historical averages. The override request, many of you have seen these numbers before, but it's 4.7 million for the schools, approximately 3.2 million for their existing operations so they can get back to level services for this year. Another $1.5 million for supplemental programs and enhancements. General government is $250,000 for road repair, $300,000 for snow and ice. An override stabilization fund of $700,000, which is intended to sort of bridge the gap between revenues and expenses during this five-year period for a total of $5,950,000. If you look at the next slide, again, it's a busy slide, I know that, but it demonstrates, you know, account by account, budget item by budget item, the school increases, you know, both in terms of meeting level services as well as the enhancements. And this adds up to $4.7 million. Terms of residential impact, residential impact, of course, varies depending upon the value of your home. Looking at the average home of $452,000, that number is, on the average, is $389. One other thing to look at is if you look at the numbers on the far right-hand column, those are numbers from our commercial industrial sector. And I think what you're going to find is that approximately 44% of this is being paid for by the commercial industrial sector. And in fact, on an equivalent piece of property, it costs them essentially double as it would a residential taxpayer. So I think it's very clear that they are paying their full share of this. Look at the next slide. It also shows over the five-year period what the impact will be on the average home. In 2020, there's going to be a one-year hit of $389 in addition to the regular Proposition Two and a Half increase. But in the previous, in the next years, I mean, that 389 is a one-term, one-time increase. In subsequent years, the only increases are your regular 2.5% increase. I know there's been a lot of concern by people that it's going to be $389 one year, then the second year it's 389 plus another 389 and so on and so forth. That is just not true. One of the important things that was developed between the three major boards, the Selectmen, the Finance Commission, the School Committee, was an MOU or pledge, this is a sort of pledge to the taxpayers that if you vote for this on June 3rd, that we will not be coming back for five years. We will live within these numbers. We will not be coming back for an operational override. Both general government and the schools will agree to live within an annual increase of no greater than 3.5%. That doesn't mean that they're automatically given 3.5%. It means that whatever they request will be, can be no greater than 3.5%. Limits the amount of personnel. I mean, those numbers are in the MOU. And if we do get savings in health insurance, we will be looking to put that back to the override stabilization fund and hopefully to allow this override to last as long as In terms of paving, you know, we do want to spend additional money on road work. It's a minimum of $250,000. There was a concern what happens if you have major changes in our assumptions such as local aid as an example. And if that happens, then we'll obviously revisit the MOU and see whether we have to make any changes to our assumptions. We have to spend money on our OPEB. That's the post-employment benefits account. We're only, I think, $155 million in the red on that. It's going to take us a few years, obviously, to get to where we want to, but something that has to be done, you know, a lot of times, you know, in the past, not much was put into the OPEB trust account. But under new requirements, communities have to stop putting money away into OPEB. We've already put a little bit away, about two, it's about $2.5 million, but we do, we would like to try to put in more as we go along. And one of the important points also in the pledge is that we're going to investigate all other revenue sources before we go to increase the tax levy, before we tax to the limit. If we get a windfall in, you know, in terms of things like, you know, state aid or whatever, you know, we'll use that money before we go and tax up to the levy limit. And if we can satisfy all the needs without gaining to the levy limit, all of them are power to us. We really think that would be great. So what's required now, it's really a two-step process. It's actually a three-step process, but the first has already been done. The Selectmen have agreed to place it on the warrant. That'll be on the warrant of June 3rd. You first have to approve this contingent budget at town meeting. Voters will then have to pass this by 50%, 50% plus one. And all we're really doing today is debating on passing the contingent budget. You know, our responsibility is simply to vote yea and nay on this contingent budget. And we're not really going to be discussing the merits of the override or whether the voters should vote for or against the override. You know, and lastly, you know, I know this is a difficult time for people in Norwood. Emotions could run high. But we have to remember when everything is said and done that we're one community and will continue to be one community regardless of what happens next month. So in times like these, you know, I always recall the words of arguably a greatest president, a man who rose from humble beginnings to lead our country by his wisdom and his foresight during a time of greatest crisis. And he said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." Abraham Lincoln. And I think you find that these words are just as relevant today as they were when first spoken in 1858. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Now, I understand the School Department has a presentation also regarding the contingent budget. And as Mr. Slater said, we're not here tonight to debate whether this should be an override or not. We're here to debate whether we should adopt the contingency budget that the FinCom has just presented to us. So if you can all keep that in mind. All right. Superintendent Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, everyone. I just want to point out that these slides can also be found on the School Department website under the School Committee and Budget Information. There's budget hearing slides. They have the same level of detail, so if you want to go back and check them out, you can. I'd also like to mention that at the table on the way in are more copies of the strategic plan we just finished, if anyone did not get a copy previously. So we're talking about the preferred budget at this point, which is the override budget. I think we covered the non-override budget a few nights ago. The override budget is our preferred budget. It will invest in our classrooms, helping us meet our student needs, repair the structural deficit that has plagued the school system for the last few years. It will allow us to realize that strategic plan we've worked so hard on over the last year or so. And it will allow us to be proactive and plan ahead and thus ensuring the achievement of our students and efficiencies as we go forward. So our goals, first and foremost, stabilize the budget. Long-term solution, fiscal stability. Increase efficiency, effectiveness, and achievement through forward planning. Restore lost programs and services. Investing in the classroom, giving our teachers the resources and the tools they need to serve our children. Correct programmatic issues and provide academic opportunities. Target student needs to achieve performance and make sure they are making effective progress. And recognize and plan for our changing demographics and increasing student needs. First and foremost, restoration of the non-override cuts, keeping the will it open, keeping our class sizes reasonable, having athletics and fine arts, middle school and high school activities, the middle school light bus, just to name a few. So I'd like to go through a little bit of what makes up that 1.529 million of the things that we would like to do to improve our school system. And we'll start a little bit with personnel, starting at the high school. We've lost about six teachers over the last five or six years at the high school level. We'd like to try to bring three FTEs back. That would allow us to expand AP. We have the lowest AP offerings in the area. Make sure we have teachers available to implement our Career Pathways Program as well as do intervention during the school day. The other thing we'd like to do at the high school is bring back a foreign language teacher that was lost a few years ago that is impeding our ability to require Mass Core, which Massachusetts has determined is college and career readiness as our standard graduation requirement. At the middle school, return the librarian that we cut, had to cut last year to half-time, and the PE teacher back up to full-time that is affecting PE and health at our middle school. Bring a adjustment counselor in. Right now, our adjustment counselors are not able to meet needs that show up. They're only really working with kids who are already in crisis, already on IEPs. We're not being preventative. And we also need to add one special education teacher to improve our sub-separate offerings at the middle school. And that, again, saves us money in the long run, more kids in district, getting served with their peers, and costing the district less money over time. At the elementary level, we want to repeat the model that has worked so well in mathematics. Mainly, we brought in a math program and brought in a math coordinator coach. And the elementary math scores speak for themselves. We'd like to repeat that, copy that for literacy and writing at the elementary level. That, along with a new curriculum, would go a long, long way. Two adjustment counselors throughout the elementary level. That will bring our elementary adjustment counselors up to one per school, which is what it should be. Right now, they are less than full-time. And that, again, they're not able to deal with needs that come up. They're only able to deal with crisis or people who are on IEPs for social, emotional needs. And one elementary teacher to address class size. District, you've heard that our English language learner population is increasing. We'd like to add one and a half teachers to address that need. And again, by having enough people to do the intervention, you move them out of the English language learning needs, and that eventually saves you money. And a technology assistant, remember last year, we added about 1,750 devices and we cut a person in technology? That doesn't really work very well long-term. So the responsibilities are increasing and we need to bring our staffing up in that level. Curriculum refresh, $300,000. We need to develop a curriculum review and replacement cycle. We have not done that. The last curriculum that was replaced was five years ago, again, that elementary language, sorry, the math program at the elementary level. So every year, we should go through and refresh and bring in new materials. And maybe not a whole new program every year, but bring in supplemental materials or refresh some of it. We need to get back to a scheduled rotation. Currently, we're in the process of looking at our ELA curriculum at the elementary level. The last time that was brought back was redone was 14 years ago. Next, after that, will be social studies. There is a new curriculum in social studies, and we need to bring in materials to implement that. This should be part of our operating budget, much like other things in other parts of the town. English language learning curriculum materials, right now, the materials we use have been teacher-developed. They don't necessarily cover the full scope and sequence. Better curriculum materials means better instruction. And again, moving students through the English language learning process and back into the regular classroom in a speedy way. Intervention materials, these are materials that will help kids who are falling behind catch up. Right now, we have very little of these, but by having an investment in this area targets instruction and keeps kids on track, moves them forward. If you have kids making effective progress in the classroom, they don't need outside support, special ed, or other things that actually cost the district more money. Project Lead the Way, this is a very exciting program. It engages students in hands-on learning activities and projects that are compelling and real-world based and really capture the skills that the future job market is working. We'd like to start this with the middle school next year with a module for each grade, expand that over time, eventually getting probably down into fifth grade and probably into ninth grade over time. Sorry, sticky fingers. Career Pathways Program, you'd heard that our high school was one of the 11 Innovation Pathways schools in the state. These are materials to make sure we can implement that program and continue growing it over time. Personalized assessment and intervention software, this is software that actually you have kids do an assessment, you have an idea of where they are, you know, compared to the standards, and what needs to be done to catch them up. Right now, our main method of measuring students is the MCAS. We get that material back in the fall after they take it in the spring, and the horse is already out of the barn. We would like to be proactive, real-time assessments, real-time intervention, and information for our teachers so they can make sure our kids are making progress. Last is professional development and training, again, in that personalized learning, the tools and development, as well as intervention, coaching, and training. Intervention is a process of how to identify, how to group, and how to instruct. And giving our teachers training in that will improve the process overall. Project-based learning, we've started this in many ways, but we have not been able to fund it fully and bring it to fruition. We would like to do that. Project-based brings a lot of skills together and requires them to demonstrate critical skills and knowledge in new and interesting ways, and it's much more engaging. So in closing, the contingent or the override budget would put us on a path to implement that five-year strategic plan, improve curriculum instruction in our classrooms, provide essential intervention when needed to keep our students on track, meet the needs of our changing demographics, our changing population, provide students with similar opportunities in neighboring communities, and ensure our students are college and career, future-ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. That's it for the formal presentations. I have several registered speakers with respect to Article Nine, and I will call them in the order in which they registered with me. Mr. Giudice, you're first. Nothing to say?
I have to go.
No, you sent me an email about it. I thought you wanted to speak about it the other night.
No, I didn't.
Okay, you're off the hook.[1424.01][1424.01](Laughter). Ms. O'Toole. And a reminder, the members know to identify themselves by name and district. Anyone who is not a town meeting member addressing us this evening or at any meeting should identify himself or herself by name and street address. All right, Ms. O'Toole.
Diane O'Toole, Ten Ryan Drive, of course, in Norwood. Former Norwood League president, former Massachusetts League president, and chair of the study committee that looked into this issue. The Norwood League of Women Voters believes that this amount that's requested is a reasonable amount. And I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize three of our 50-year members of the Norwood League who are also either former or current town meeting members, and that's Martha Calamaria, Mary Ann Kenny, and Marty McKenna. Congratulations to them.
All right. Next, Mrs. Donahue.
Helen Donahue, District Six. Good evening. I speak before you as a former schoolteacher in the town of Norwood, but mostly as a parent of three daughters who graduated the Norwood School System. It's my middle daughter Molly's birthday today, and she graduated in 1995. When Molly graduated, she was the class valedictorian. I use this to show all of you how much I love the Norwood School System and how much I appreciate all that the Norwood School Teachers have done here for the thousands and thousands of children who have gone through the school system. I will create some hard feelings here because I don't think that it's a good thing to assess $5,950,000 as an amount. So I have a substitute motion, and the substitute motion reads as follows. I move to amend the main motion in its entirety by deleting and substituting the following: Move that the sum of $2 million be raised from taxation and used for school department operations only contingent upon the passage of Proposition Two and a Half referendum question pursuant to General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21. I sign this motion, and it was seconded by Mr. Ed Lynch. Now, on the motion, I feel that at the time that the Budget Balancing Committee created the five-year plan, that at that time, we didn't have enough consideration about the fact that we definitely, very shortly, have to build a new middle school. The existing middle school, as you know, needs $6 million worth of repairs for the air system and the portable classrooms on the new, on the middle school are disintegrating. They're, the metal on them is fading away. And this is no way that the town of Norwood should have a middle school. The new middle school will be a $65 million project. We don't know how much of that money we'll get for aid, but it's, I think it's 130,000 square feet at $500 a square foot. This is going to happen as soon as possible. So we have, we need to help the schools. We definitely do. There's a real need there. And that's why I think $2 million of help will be a big help. And I think that there, another thing, that at the time that the five-year plan was created, that not, we didn't have the real up-to-date plans on how much revenue would be coming in. And so some revenue has come in more than we thought. One noticeable change was that it went from the projected $7 million to the $5.9 when we did get the extra state aid in time. But I think that there are other figures too that could be helped out. Another thing that's going to help us very, very soon is that the Forbes Hill project, the buyer is going to spend $260 million. And yes, that won't happen. We won't get the taxes probably for three years, but what we'll get as soon as he gets his permit, just the building, building department, application fees for the new construction would be, going to be, soon, very soon, a big, big help to this town. So that's a huge source of money that we didn't expect. We, the town of Norwood, as mentioned earlier by Mr. Slater, the commercial real estate pays double what the residential real estates pay. And you, like, I wasn't around, I was around when Plimpton Press left. I was around when Mason Neelin left. I was around when, who else? Analog Devices. Ray Strata started here 44 years ago with his circuit board, and now analog is gone. We're lucky we have the car dealerships to help pay us out, help us pay, but we need to show good faith toward the commercial because that's why we're so lucky. to show good faith toward the commercial because that's why we're so lucky here in Norwood. We have the blend of the commercial and the residential, so that too is very important. The other thing that I have to say is that I sincerely believe that there are other ways that we can find to help out. We need sports, you know, my, we need music. All my kids were music. My husband was the captain of the football team. It's all a part of life. It's all a part of what makes a great educational experience, but we have the circle of hope. We have the Norwood Scholarship Foundation. We started with $5,000 in scholarship and now we have over a million bucks. There are ways. Milton, my cousin lives over there, so they all have an event and then they raise some money for the school. We could have a system where we could have private people raise money and have fun like Dancing with the Stars and just not put the burden on the seniors and the poor people in town because we're not Wellesley, we're not Newton. We are Norwood and we have a wonderful middle-class town here and it's my sincere belief that we have to help maintain the ability of all these people to not only just old people, middle-aged people too, husbands and wives of working, they're paying for daycare. We're not, we have to, we have to, in this message from my daughter, 1995, you know what her topic was about? Call for kindness. That was the topic that my daughter had, call for kindness. So please, let's be kind to all the people in town and try and make this a little bit livable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Donahue. Next on the list of registered speakers, Ms. Doyle.
I just had a question and it has to do with the commercial industry in town because they pay what?
Wait a minute.
Yeah?
You want to tell us who you are and where you-
Oh, Cheryl Doyle, District Seven.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's like a stopgap where anybody has figured this out. I've been following on all the stuff and I know how they have all the residential and On commercial real estate, and I don't know if a lot of people realize it, they're assessed not only on the building, the land, but the asphalt, the sprinkler systems and everything. So if you have something that's assessed at like 2 million and then you multiply it out, the taxes are around, I believe, like 45,000 and then you have the override. The increases on the taxes have to be passed to the tenants that are on the, in the buildings. If you start losing tenants, then these commercial landlords, they have abatement lawyers. So once they start filing all these abatements, that's revenue lost to the town. So what is the impact on, on that? I'm just curious on that. And then on the flip side, Mr. Hokliotis, back in April presented an overlay to the downtown and in order to have the incentive for any of the landlords down there was to add to the fourth floor so it's cost-effective. When they go to build, whether they rehab or they level the building and they rebuild it, they're going to be assessed at a higher value. They also have to do the stretch code. They also have to bring it to the current code industry. So if they don't have a sprinkler system or strobes or anything like that, they have to add all that. Did we just lose that incentive to build out our downtown area then? Because if they're assessed at a higher value and they're taxed more, what would be the purpose of them doing the build-out if they're lower on their taxes right now without doing anything? So I'm just wondering, do we have like a Plan B so we're not, I don't know, getting in more trouble than what we're already in? I realize we need the money. We need to fix the problem, we need to fix the issue and everything, but also I don't want to see it compounded.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Donnelly.
Bob Donnelly, District Five. My only question would be if, if the proposal is a $2 million budget, that leaves 2.7 million in the school side unaccounted for. I'm just wondering if the proponents have any ideas regarding the application of $2 million? What programs will it be addressing and what will not be addressed?
Mr. Donnelly, the proponent cannot tell us how the $2 million would be used. That's up to the school department.
My only question would be perhaps the school committee could comment on that in terms of this would leave you with 2.7 million dollars less than what you're asking for and I'd ask you to speak to that issue.
I'll take that as a question for the school department and Ms. Bodenhofer, if you can respond to the question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. With regard to the $2 million, it's certainly true that the, that the school committee has authority on how to spend that money. $2 million would allow us to restore the cuts that we are proposing for this year. It would not allow us enough money to undo all of the cuts that we've done over the previous last year and the, you know, the five years before that and it would not allow us enough money for the following year. As I mentioned, we're predicting a $650,000 deficit next year in addition to what we already have and this year we balanced the budget using a little over $500,000 in free cash that we would assume would not be available next year and $700,000 in circuit breaker that would probably also not be available next year. I should also point out that that $500,000 in free cash was recommended by the Budget Balancing Committee that that money be appropriated to the schools in the event that the override did not pass. So if the override did pass, I think we would perhaps have to give back that $500,000. So in that case, the $2 million would not be enough to completely restore the cuts we've made this year.
Thank you. Mr. Donnelly, are you set now? That was your only question. Okay. Mr. Hall is next on the list.
John Hall, District Six. The amendment has proposals and claims in three main areas. One is the financial needs of the various departments in the town where the assumption is that the general government departments don't really need any help beyond what they're getting and the school doesn't need as much help as it's asking for. The second area is the potential from other revenue sources and the third is the acceptability of the additional burden on Norwood residents, residential or commercial. So on the first point, I'm just going to run through a set of headlines. Without its share of the override money, the police department is going to be eliminating beat patrols and severely hampering programs to address the opiate crisis. Beat patrols not only provide quicker response, but also increase the interaction between police and the people they protect so they think of themselves as one community. We have that right now. Departments like Ferguson, Missouri do not. Without its share of the override, the fire department is going to have to divert many fire and ambulance calls to other providers. Diverted ambulance calls mean a loss of cost recovery revenue and probably slower responses as well, making timely, effective treatment and good outcomes less likely. Diverted fire calls mean more use of mutual aid. Norwood will be requesting far more mutual aid than it provides. That is like expecting neighboring towns to pay for our fire protection. The neighbors will probably find that unacceptable and we could lose access to mutual aid. The public works department without its share would have to stretch out schedules. Many people complain about the state of our roads, but with current funding, we can't process our many streets any faster. Without their share of the override, it'll take most of a century to cycle through our roads. Other cuts will mean longer times to plow the town, reduced preventative maintenance on infrastructure, no tree removal if there is no emergency, less maintenance of graves at the cemetery and reduced hours of public access at the landfill. Without its share of the override, Father Max Pool will close, the Civic Center workout room will soon close and there will be severe cuts to the number of recreation department programs. Without its share of the override, library hours and programs will be reduced. Other towns that have cut library hours have lost eligibility for state aid and/or interlibrary loan, further reducing services. This is a slippery slope. Some of those towns have even lost their libraries altogether. Without an override, its share of the override, the schools will offer less to students and impose greater burdens on teachers. The cuts would reduce foreign language courses below core requirements, eliminate athletics and other extracurricular programs except for wealthier families who can self-fund and reduce course offerings so much that some students will be shut out. With fewer opportunities, college-track students will be unable to submit competitive applications and career-track students will be unable to submit competitive resumes. Without an override, classrooms in the school day will be more crowded in violation of recommended practices. The cuts will mean that grades two to four will exceed recommended class sizes. The middle and high schools will exceed recommended student-to-teacher ratios. Teachers will be teaching every period of the day, which will sharply reduce opportunities for feedback to students. There is extensive research to indicate that student performance and learning will suffer without that detailed, consistent feedback. Also, other special programs targeting primaries of Norwood's current need would be cut, including staffing and materials for career pathway and advanced placement programs, staffing to address the growing share of students who need English language learner courses, updating current curricula that are misaligned with the contents of mandatory state tests such as elementary English language arts, which is currently a decade out of date, and programs to address our stagnating English test scores modeled on programs we've already used successfully to improve our math test scores. Finally, something that hasn't been touched on at all is how attractive is Norwood if you're a brand-new teacher? A decade ago, Norwood's entry-level salaries were low for the region. That's no longer true. That's been fixed. However, Norwood will continue under, without its share of the, of the additional funds to be an annual layoff roulette. Every year, you wonder whether you're going to have a job next year, just because you have one this year doesn't mean anything. That's been true.
Mr. Hall, you're about at the end of your time pretty much. Do you need more time?
Yes, sir, please.
And how much more time would you like to ask by way of extension?
I'd like to ask for another five minutes, please.
Is there a motion for Mr. Hall by Mr. Connelly, seconded by Ms. Numie, for a five-minute extension? On that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The five-minute extension is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Switching to the second point, which is other revenue sources, most of what we hear from people about other revenue sources suffer, I think, from a realistic sense of scale. There are a lot of other revenue sources, but there aren't any and there is no prospect for there to be any that are large enough to make up for the kind of money that we're talking about here. Take as a typical breakdown, comparison between fiscal years 2018 and fiscal year 2020. In that period, real estate taxes went up 3.6% a year. The new growth contributed only about a million dollars a year against an annual total of over $70 million. Even if you double or triple new growth, you're not going to make a real dent there and given Norwood's resistance to large apartment buildings and the scarcity of land for new development, this does not seem a promising approach. Every other revenue source other than real estate taxes combined decreased by half a percent a year over that same period. Some of them are because, the big ones are because they're forbidden by law to do anything more than break even like utility receipts or they're set by the state and we don't have any control over it. So unless you find a way to break out of long-running patterns, lack of control here, it's unrealistic to suggest that unspecified new revenue sources are going to be a complete or satisfactory replacement for this kind of money. Lastly, I want to talk briefly about the burden on Norwood residents. Our current residential tax rate ranks 48th lowest out of 351 Massachusetts cities and towns. With an override, we would drop to 59th lowest, 11 slots. We'd still be one of the lowest taxed around. The nearest town we would drop past is Wellesley. Wellesley's median home price is three times Norwood's. So if you imagine somebody who says, okay, now I should move to Wellesley because that's a lower-tax town, but I'm going, I'm going to pay three times as much to get the same home and I'm going to end up paying a lot more tax. If you go through the other towns that might be considered to be lower tax rate than us, you see similar stories. Lastly, I want to touch for a moment on the question of seniors. Medicare was enacted in 1965 and in 1975, Social Security adopted automatic annual cost of living increases tied to the Consumer Price Index. The image of seniors living on fixed incomes has not been valid for over 40 years. If you go into the actual data, and this has been true for a very long time, 14% of Americans are below the poverty line. Only 9% of seniors are below the poverty line. Now, they have some costs that younger people don't have. They avoid some costs like housing and commuting that other, that younger families have. But when you put everything together, they are not a distinctly vulnerable poor class. Anyone who has trouble making ends meet, no matter what their age, deserves sympathy and if we can make it happen, some accommodation. There are a lot of programs out there, state and otherwise, to try to help people. But statistically speaking, that person is less likely to be a senior than not and I think we should stop thinking of them as a special class needing our help. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. That exhausts the list of registered speakers. I'll open it up now to anyone in the hall who wishes to speak on the matter. Ms. Numie?
Kelly Numie, District Five. I'd like to thank all the registered speakers tonight for speaking. I know this is a very important issue and it actually has, it absolutely has economic impacts on the whole community. One quick thing I just want to say is I've heard a lot of arguments for and against the override. I would really encourage everyone in this room, instead of listening to what people have to say, to actually do some research. The Department of Local Services has all of our economic data and indicators online that will indicate what our trends have been for the last 10 to 20 years. So I'm just going to point out a couple of those for everyone and this is based on solid fact. It's nothing I've made up or conjured. Our growth rate, the amount of new growth that we've had in the last five years, has never exceeded $1.4 million, ever. That includes adding Upland Woods and includes adding other large complexes. It has never happened. So banking on a $5 million windfall in a year, even if for some reason that happened one year, that would be fantastic. It is completely unsustainable in a community that averages about $800,000 in new growth a year, pretty steadily for the last 20 years. That's the first thing. Second thing is our community, as a ranking, spends in the top 10% on fire, police and public works and I think we should. Those services are extremely important to the community. They are things that our residents value. They make us live someplace safe, someplace we want to call home and everyone feels the community of those services like Chief Brooks's department, Chief Morris's department. I personally know a lot of those officers because you know what? They're in my kid's school and they're walking the streets and every police officer walks a beat. Those are all things that make this town not only safe, but protect against things that Mr. Hall talked about, about having a division between the people that protect us and the people that live in our community. I don't want to see any of those things get cut, but if you look at the data, as a town, we spend the least amount in eastern Massachusetts per resident on education. I just want everyone to hear that again. We support all our public services in one of the highest ways, but when it comes to education, we fund that the least out of any community in this, in this, in the eastern part of the state. And all of this is publicly available on the Department of Local Services website. I don't think this is an issue about trying to find or manufacture ways to fix issues or to bank on some pie-in-the-sky idea that something's going to fall into our lap like the money trees that have grown here the past few years. This is a time to address a fundamental structural problem that will be not, that either needs to be addressed one of two ways. Either by generating more revenue, the $5.9 million that these fine people have worked- Either by generating more revenue, the $5.9 million that these fine people have worked on, that figure for over a year, or we all have to accept significant cuts to all services in the town. That's not just school. That ultimately will be police. It'll be fire. It'll be public works. Those are the only two options. Any other option is a nonstarter. There's no logical data that supports it. So when anyone thinks about that issue, just think of those two things, and think about the type of community you want to live in. Do you want to live in a community where you have police officers that walk the street, where you feel safe, you know those people, and you know they're here to support you and your children? Or do you want to live in a community that doesn't have those services? That's up for the voters to decide.
Ms. Numie, thank you. I want to remind people, we're not talking about what we want the voters to vote on on the third. We're speaking tonight, at this moment, on the motions that have been brought under Article 9, whether to spend, to appropriate $5.950,000 on the so-called contingency budget or to adopt the amendment proposed by Mrs. Donahue to reduce that number to $2 million to be used exclusively for schools. So I want to remind people that that's what we're speaking to. And Ms. Donahue's motion is what's really on the floor right now, whether to amend the main motion and simply have a $2 million number strictly for the schools, as opposed to the FinCom's motion, which is up on the screen for a total of $5,950,000. All right? Ms. Bodenhofer, you're going to speak to the proposed amendment?
To the motion. Yes, to the proposed amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a few thoughts on the proposed amendment. First, I'd like to speak as the chair of the school committee. I already addressed the question about cuts, but I want to remind everyone that Dr. Thompson proposed improvements to the schools, investment in our curriculum, so that our students will get the best possible match with the current standards that they're being judged against and with what students in neighboring communities are learning. It invests in intervention, which will allow us to help our students before they need special education, and hopefully ultimately reduce the number of students who are on special education, ultimately reducing our costs, improving our efficiencies. And inherent in all of this is a long-term plan that allows the schools to do long-term planning, not to spend time every year trying to figure out how to whittle something back, but to figure out how to make plans going forward. So that's on the school committee side. But then I want to put on my Budget Balancing Committee hat, because I'm currently the chair of the Budget Balancing Committee. This committee spent nearly a year coming up with a plan. We considered all revenues. As Mrs. Donahue mentioned, we, at one time, were talking about a $7 million number. When the state, luckily, they offered us, basically, you know, we found out that they were going to be giving us more money, we adjusted the number down. Those adjustments have been made. The committee voted unanimously to recommend this $5.95 million plan, because it would give the town, not just the schools, but the general government and our whole town, long-term stability for a period of at least five years. That was what we set out to do, and that was what every member of that committee voted this plan, the $5.95 million plan would do for you. Finally, I want to speak as a town meeting member. I look at what has happened in the schools, and I feel that the schools have been treading water for years. Last year, we started to dip a little bit below the surface. This year, if nothing changes, we are actively drowning. This $5.95 million plan is a rescue boat that's coming along, and it could pull the schools in, and we could be in a great position for the next, at least the next five years. I believe that $2 million is like throwing us a life ring. It gives us a way to hang on, and we can tread water for a little bit longer. But is that really what we want for our kids? I think we want to empower our children, give them what they need, so they're not just treading water, they're swimming, and they're racing against the other kids around them. Thank you.
Thank you. What's up? I see a few, oh, council. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Flynn is back with us tonight. He's pinch-hitting for Mr. DeLuca. Mr. Flynn?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. There's a legal issue with the motion that's been presented, and the issue is this. Massachusetts law allows town meeting to appropriate money contingent upon a Proposition Two and a Half override, as is proposed here. But part of that authorizing statute says, and I'll read it, "The statement of the purpose of the appropriation shall be substantially the same as the statement of purpose in the ballot question." The concern here is that if town meeting votes the motion as proposed to be amended, you would have eliminated three of the items that are in the warrant on the proposed vote, namely, the stabilization fund money, and the DPW money, and the municipal side money. In my opinion, that would not be substantially the same statement of purpose as is in the ballot question, and I think the vote would be at risk, frankly, if not outright illegal. If town meeting votes the proposed amendment, I believe that that vote would be at risk of not being valid.
All right, Mr. Flynn. I understand, I'll call on people in a moment, but we need to have this discussion. I understand the motion under Article 9, as presented by the FinCom, to be the FinCom's proposal of how to spend the money if the override passes. Does anybody have with them a copy of the actual ballot question? All right. Somebody have it, hand it up to me, please. So, thank you, Mr. Flynn. Now, if we can continue this, the question is, shall the town of Norwood be allowed to assess an additional $5,950,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of operating municipal government, $550,000, the school department, $4,700,000, and establishing a stabilization fund for municipal government and school department operations, $700,000 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019? So the ballot question calls out the proposed uses of the $5,950,000 for the current year. For, I'm sorry, not for the current year, for the year that will begin on July 1, which is fiscal year 2020. Mr. Flynn, is that what you're saying, that because the ballot calls out those uses for fiscal year 2020, you're concerned that the proposed amendment, which would change that, runs afoul of the law? That the proposed amendment would simply say that of what's being appropriated by town meeting, instead of the recommendation of the Finance Commission, would instead be $2 million appropriated for our school department? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, town meetings. It's partly the dollar amount, but the main point is the purposes for which the ballot question seeks approval. There are two on the municipal side and one stabilization fund, a total of four, depending on your point of view. This amendment eliminates three of them and only addresses the school department. So in addition to cutting it by $2 million, it's eliminating the other purposes, and in my opinion, that is probably not substantially the same as the statement of purpose in the ballot question. That's why I raised the issue, and I believe it would be invalid, frankly.
Well, let me ask this question. If we did not vote this contingency, if we were not here tonight considering the contingency budget, and we had the override election on June 3, and if it passed on June 3, the voters would have authorized additional taxation in the amount of $5,950,000 for the purposes stated in the ballot question that I just read, which is three different matters. We have them broken down here, but in the ballot, do you have the ballot? If you can put the ballot up, please, that'd be great. The ballot, I'll call on people in a bit. The ballot asks the voters whether the town should be allowed to assess $5.95 million more in tax to be used for certain things. But let's say we had not had this meeting tonight. We had the election June 3, and let's say the voters authorized the override. The money will not be appropriated until town meeting votes on appropriating the money. Is town meeting bound by the language of the ballot question to spend the money as described in the ballot question in fiscal year 2020? Is that, that's your view of it? In fiscal year 2020, town meeting is bound to spend that money as presented on the ballot?
No, Mr. Moderator. In my opinion, if that, if you didn't have this article, and town meeting wasn't being asked to appropriate money contingent upon a Proposition Two and a Half override, but if a ballot question put that question to the voters, that would increase your levy limit, but there would be no source of, there would be no appropriation yet. But if there were to be an appropriation, you would have already increased the levy limit for that purpose. It's a different scenario.
But if town meeting then, then if we held a special town meeting to spend the money that the voters had authorized?
Yes.
Would we be bound by the language of the ballot question? Would we be bound to spend the money as set forth in the ballot question?
No. You would have increased the levy limit, but you still would have to authorize the expenditure of the money.
No, I'm saying, would town meeting have no choice but to authorize the expenditure? If it authorizes the expenditure of any money, would it have to authorize it according to what's laid out in the ballot question?
No.
So town meeting could then vote, if we're not, if we were not on the warrant for the annual right now, but we held a special instead in sometime down the road. Could somebody make the proposal that Mrs. Donahue was making tonight?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. You mean, not in the context of a contingent vote, just, the answer is yes. Town meeting could appropriate less than that. You would then have some excess levy limit that has not yet been utilized.
Which we can collect or not collect, depending upon how the tax rate is set.
Yes.
All right. So what is the, here's the ballot question, as we have it. So what is the difference, then, between us, between a proposal to limit it tonight and a scenario under which we didn't have this matter before us tonight, and town meeting met, say, in July or August or September, and voted some different amount than what is being proposed by the FinCom?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, in my opinion, the difference is this, that this motion is presented in the context of an appropriation that would be contingent upon a Proposition Two and a Half override. The ballot question that has been prepared by the selectmen reads as you read on the screen. It's a different scenario. The motion, I believe, is invalid because of the statutory language that authorizes town meeting to make an appropriation contingent upon an override, namely, the statement of the purpose of the appropriation, which is what you're debating tonight, shall be substantially the same as the statement of purpose in the ballot question. It's a different situation.
So if the motion had mentioned highway construction, snow and ice, or general government, stabilization fund, and school department operations, it would not run afoul of the statute, even if the numbers were different?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, because the purposes would be the same.
All right. So the purposes have to be the same, but not the dollar amounts. We can appropriate, this body can appropriate a different amount than what is being asked for in the main motion.
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
As long as it covers those three general areas referred to in the ballot question.
Yes. In the scenario you've presented, you would again have, if the voters approved the ballot question in the form that's on the screen, you would have excess levy capacity that you haven't used yet. Town meeting would have said, "We will spend less than that, but not the whole amount."
But we can't spend less all the way down to zero? We have to spend something on each, at least propose to spend something on each of those three areas?
If you approach it in this format with a contingent appropriation, yes. You have to have the purpose in the motion substantially similar to the purpose in the ballot question.
And that's because this is a contingent budget.
Correct.
If it were a regular budget and there was no contingency involved, we'd have more freedom.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Donahue, this is your motion. I'll allow you to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Helen Donahue, District 6. Town Council, Town Council, I have the greatest respect in the world for you, and I totally understand what you're talking about. And the reason that the town moderator and I, we went over this last week together, and the reason that we thought that the language would be okay as is, is because I've been a town meeting representative for 51 years, and what we've always done, if it's less than the total asked for, we were allowed to go lower than the total asked for. But out of the greatest respect for you, and if the town moderator would allow me, I could easily amend that motion further and say, "We go $10 for the snow and ice and $20 for whatever else we have to." And then that would comply with your, that would comply with your requirement.
Let me ask that, by the way, Mrs. Donahue, I did not pass on the legality of anything you proposed. What I did do was rewrite it so that you wouldn't have the effect of reducing the school number from $4.7 million to $2 million, which is what you were proposing.
You are right.
And left the other matters with the numbers that are up there.
You are right about that.
Because I understood your intention to be strictly school. So please, don't ascribe to me that I acted as a lawyer in advising you.
No, no, I'm sorry. I didn't mean, I didn't mean that. But what I did mean was that you and I did go over it together, and you did make changes to it, and I was led to believe that it was okay.
I clarified your language, because the effect of your original language would have been to cut the schools from $4.7 to $2 million and leave the other numbers intact. And I suspected that was not really your intent. All right. Council, if Mrs. Donahue managed to amend the motion, which, right now, we've got a motion to amend on the floor, but if we got around to that somehow, would that satisfy the requirements and the statutory requirements relating to a contingency budget?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, if I understand the question, if the motion addressed each of the purposes in the article but sought to appropriate less money, that would eliminate the legal issue that I was talking about, yes.
All right. So it does not have to be prorated, it can be any number, as long as you touch upon those purposes. All right. So Mrs. Donahue's original motion was $2 million for the schools only. She would like to change that to what, $10 for?
What else?
Well, it's up there. It's your motion. How much for the stabilization fund and how much for general government?
Helen Donahue, District 6. It's $10 for whatever we have.
There are two matters that you have to touch upon.
But every subject we have.
$10 to your motion. Mr. Lynch, do you agree to that, since you seconded the motion? I'm not asking you to speak to it. Do you agree to that? Change to the motion?
Yes.
All right. All right. So Mrs. Donahue wants to change her motion to move that the sum of $10, that the sum of $10 be raised from taxation and appropriated for the purpose of operating the municipal government. government, $2 million for the school department, and $10 for stabilization, for general government, municipal government, and school operations. So, she's increased the total of her motion by $20. All right? Unless I hear otherwise, I'm going to take it that there's, for the sake of discussion, that people generally consent to the change to the motion, to save us some time on this. All right? I hear no objection, we'll go forward. Now, I was going to call on people, we're back to discussion on the motion as revised. Ms. Neil Rizzo.
Hi, Katie Neil Rizzo, District Two. First and foremost, I have the utmost respect for Mrs. Donahue and her years of service in town. She's a trailblazer for women getting involved in politics in town, and I really appreciate everything she's done for the town. We had a talk with her a few months ago about this number, and my feelings have not changed on it regarding this specific amendment. As outlined in the FinCom presentation, the main goal to, was, of this number was to eliminate the structural deficit. $2,020 to the schools does not do that. Another goal was, or another piece presented, was that the projection clearly demonstrated a large gap between future revenues and expenses. $2,020 does not address that. Without the override, Norwood would face a $31 million deficit in beyond year five. $2,000 and, $2,020 will barely touch that. Additionally, in the override packet that was presented, the total projected cuts on general government side in fiscal years 21 through 24, 1.488 million, $2,020 does not address that, doesn't help the cuts to DPW, summer help or overtime positions to the fire department and police, positions at the library and DPW, the transfer program, if we're talking about taking care of all of our residents, or the closure of Father Max Civic Building and Equipment, all affected, all which affects families who cannot afford private memberships to gyms, as well as senior citizens who can only afford memberships to the Civic Center. The new revenue sources to be explored, the promise is that new revenue sources will be explored before taxing to the full levy limit of 5.95 million. So, if, as Ms. Donahue pointed out, the Forbes Building brings a windfall, we would not have to tax to that full limit. If it doesn't come through for three to five years, we still have that option. We don't, we don't leave the town or the schools hanging and needing to make those cuts for those, for the next three years. And regarding school fundraising, I can personally tell you, we do not have any more time to do any more fundraising at the schools. We are already doing fundraisers daily at the schools. We are selling cookies, wrapping paper, candles, we have dances, we're making our kids run for money. We are reading for money, we're having spring fairs, we're washing cars on the weekends, we're selling books to our own children for money, and we are booked weekly, daily. We literally have no more time to do any more fundraisers. If there was any more time to do fundraisers, trust me, we would be doing it. I'm spending time doing fundraisers as well as advocating for this, and I disagree wholeheartedly with a $2,020 amendment to the 5.95 on Article Nine.
Thank you. Ms. McQuade.
Krista McQuade, District Four, move the question.
Seconded by Mr. Conley. What is the point of order?
I regret to do the speaking, I haven't spoken yet.
You're right. You're right. Mr. Lynch, you did want to speak on this, I apologize. So, let's give you, and then we'll come back to somebody else.
Ed Lynch, District Seven. An hour, an hour and a half ago, whatever, I had no intentions of speaking or saying anything, but Ms. Donahue asked if I'd sign it, $2 million, and I said, yes, only because $2 million will pass easier than 5.9. Anyway, this question can come back next November or next May. These, this, this number is really high. It's, it's, of the 90, 96% of all the overrides that passed in the previous 10 years, that's 330, okay? They were for under $3 million, so I'm just putting this out there. Operational overrides, they're for small numbers. I looked, this town's passed, you know, 30 overrides, 35 overrides, out of, you know, they passed normally higher, but they're like for small money, they're not for like $6 million. So, as a matter of fact, in fiscal year 2018, okay, there were 20 overrides on the ballot in this state, 12 passed, for a total of 8.8 million. So, I figure this $2 million sounds good, you know, you're increasing, but with this passing, you're going to increase the school budget over 10%, which is fine, but it's going to be difficult to sustain that for, for five years. So, in year six, when the third override comes, because there will be the second override, which I am for, and it would be for a lower number on this one, but the middle school will be, should be coming up soon, however soon, it should be soon, and, which would bring us override number three in five years, or six, whatever we could stretch it out for, that number's going to start at 6 million, and then go up higher from that. But the assets, I'm thinking, you know, the Forbes Hill, we just took out over $3 million out of this free cash that everyone's talking about, the free cash for the last two years between the minus system, which is 1.8. Didn't we pay cash for the minus system, sir? Mr. Moderator?
The munis, the accounting system, cash?
Yep.
1.7 cash for that.
Okay, and then, well, probably at least 1.3 for the finance, the Forbes Hill for the last two years with the maintenance? Sure? It's $3 million out in two years.
No, no.
No? We didn't pay 1.3 in interest and maintenance over the last two years for Forbes Hill.
Mr. McQuade, you get those numbers?
Roughly, sir, we don't need a quote, I'm just roughly.
No, but you asked the question, so rather than have it hanging out there.
Okay, thank you. All he's getting at, my point is, that when you take $3 million out of a budget, it's give and take. So, the other thought is, the evaluations on the property are going up, so that's going to be coming out in, was it September? So, it's probably going to go up a few percent, it should put some more money into the, no?
Well, do you have a question on that?
No, just a thought, well, eventually, you know, I'd listen to the town manager if I could. The other two more quick points here, the impact on business, I was wondering about that too. I mean, you know, it's a pretty big increase. And you're also taxing the people three, four, or five years down the road, you know? It's like, that's, this operational override is not for five years down the road, but this, this particular one is, you know? And the other thing I was going to mention is, the state knows they're hitting the schools hard, and they proposed more, to give back more money to the schools. It's just, could be a little bit more, that hopefully, whether this passes or not, I mean, it's, it's just, too bad it's got to be one or the other, it's too bad there was nothing in the middle, as, you know, I've been saying for two months, whoever listens to me. But this, this all right, last point, has nothing to do with the, with the new middle school, so it's two separate things. People still concerned about that, I was cutting my grass, a guy came by, he said, I'm for the middle school, I said, so am I, but this is not that, whatever. And I do appreciate all these people up there effort making two budgets and, you know, twice the paperwork or whatever. So, I guess we're going to just have to let the chips fall where they may. Thank you.
All right. Let me get one clarification on this. Mr. Lynch referred to the $2 million, and also, we can, perhaps somebody will answer your questions. You referred to $2 million as opposed to the 5.95 million. The ballot question is for 5.95 million. Nothing we do will affect that, whether we vote.
That's why I signed Mrs. Donahue's thing just an hour ago. I had no idea who was going to sign it, she offered it to me, I said, yeah, I second that motion, I'm interested in it.
All right, but, but you signed it because you thought it would affect the ballot question of 5.95?
No, I didn't, I thought, yeah, yeah, I did.
It will not.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing.
Okay, well, that explains that then.
All right, let me explain this to everybody here, and everybody at home, and I've alluded to this before, nothing the town meeting does directly affects the question that's on the ballot. That's not going to change. If we voted Mrs. Donahue's motion, or some other motion, any motion, that number is not going to change on the ballot. The ballot is set and cannot be changed. So, if you think, I just want you to be clear, if you think that changing the number changes this number up here on the ballot, it doesn't affect that. It may affect what gets spent of it, but it doesn't affect the, the override question, just so it's clear.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Mazuko, you wanted to answer a question that Mr. Lynch was posing, and, and you're just, I'm calling you to answer that, if you would.
Just, just to address two quick points. One of them, the coming revaluation doesn't generate additional income for the town, it just realigns property values with the sales market. So, you could have a situation where values go up and certain payers may pay more, but it means that somebody else is simply paying down here. It also shifts the balance between residential and commercial, but it doesn't generate any additional revenue for the town. So, the example we always use is if next year, every single property in town doubled in value, the rate would get cut in half, the tax levy remains exactly the same. So, whether you're paying $5,000 on a half a million dollar house, or you're paying $5,000 on a million dollar house because your levy is, your rate is different, that just impacts the rate, it doesn't actually impact the dollar amount that the town sees. So, you see a 10% increase, it's not more, it's not new growth, it's not the levy increasing. That tax levy every year, that $75 number, that only goes up by new growth, the two and a half were allowed, and an override. Those are the only things that can impact that. Values can shoot through the roof, and we don't necessarily get the additional tax value of that, because two and a half is set to the tax levy. Other states, that's the case, not in Massachusetts. And just if I could speak quickly to the impact on businesses, it's important to remember that businesses go where their market is. So, there are towns within 10 miles of us that have a tax rate 12 or 14 dollars higher than we do, and there are towns like Dover where their tax rate is 6 or 7 dollars. So, the fear that businesses all of a sudden are going to leave the town because their tax rate went up, it's not going to happen. If they wanted to operate in Dover, they would flock to Dover, but they don't want to be in Dover, their market is here. There are towns that have higher rates than us, if the case was that businesses would flock there, then they would have nothing going on there. Could you see an adjustment where one property has a difference in their value because maybe they lose a tenant? Sure. Are they going to pass the cost on? Yes, but any business passes all of its costs on to customers, that's how businesses work. And you have to remember, our commercial market is valuable. The Analog Devices property just sold for $28 million. So, there's a strong desire for businesses to be in Norwood. Analog Devices wouldn't have sold for that if that wasn't the case. Moderna are coming here, Corbus Pharmaceuticals coming here, we have a very desirable commercial market. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right. I'm told by the town accountant that the, we budgeted $225,000 for operations at Forbes Hill, and in the prior fiscal year, we spent $5,662. Mr. Good, do you happen to know what we spent on interest? We're getting that answer for you. If the runner could bring the microphone down to Mr. Good for when he finds the, the answer.
Mr. Moderator, Mark Good, treasurer, we've spent $740,000 on interest, $313,000 in 2019, and, and we're proposing $434,000 for FY '20.
So, for the fiscal year that hasn't started, we're proposing $400 and somewhat thousand?
Correct.
Until we retire the debt on the sale?
That's correct.
And in the current fiscal year, we spent $300 and somewhat thousand?
In FY '19, current, December '18, we spent $313,000. In December of 2020, we'll spend $434,000.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Lynch, did that answer the questions you had?
Through you, sir. Did you say December of '18 and December of '20?
Is there a payment at December of '19?
December of '19.
You're referring to fiscal year 2020, which will be December of, of '19, will be part of fiscal year '20. Is that right?
So, in December '18, we've spent $313,000.
Which was part of fiscal year 2019, right?
Correct. And in fiscal year 2020, it'll be $434,000.
Thank you.
So, when the, the current note matures in December, we'll pay $434,000.
And by then, will the property be sold?
I believe we're close to closing that deal.
So, we will then have paid off the borrowing?
Correct.
And the interest will stop running?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Lynch, got that? Okay. All right. Ms. McQuade? You wanted to, you had a motion a moment ago. And was it moving the question? All right, and that was seconded by Mr. Conley. We'll come back to that. On moving the question, this is with respect to the, the motion to amend proposed by Mrs. Donahue. On moving that question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Question has been moved. Question's been moved, and we now proceed to vote on it. And the proposal, the motion is to amend the main motion by deleting it in its entirety and substituting the following. Move that the sum of $2,020 be raised from taxation and used for the following purposes: $10 for municipal government operations, $2 million for school department operations, and $10 for stabilization fund for municipal government and school department operations, contingent upon the passage of a proposition two and a half referendum question pursuant to general laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). Did I state that fairly, Mrs. Donahue?
Fairly.
That is the motion you're being asked to vote on. On that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
That has failed. All right, we return to the main motion, as originally proposed by the FinCom, and Ms. Bartlett, if you can get that up in front of us, please. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Kai?
All right, by Mr. Kai, moving the question, seconded by Mr. Di Maria.
On moving the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The question has been moved. We now proceed to vote on the FinCom's motion as laid out on the screen for a total of 5 million, the contingency budget for a total of $5,950,000. On that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. Okay, we move on now to Article 10. Mr., I'm sorry, before we do that, Mr. Flynn?
Mr. Moderator, if you feel it was a two-thirds vote, would you so declare the reason for that is tucked in the middle of the article is to establish a stabilization fund?
Thank you. Mr. Plasko, you speaking to that?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, Bill Plasko, District One. A stabilization account normally requires a two-thirds, but when it's A stabilization account normally requires a two-thirds, but when it's established by a ballot, it only requires a majority.
Well.
Oh, I'm sorry. The appropriation is what we're doing.
He's absolutely correct.
Now, quickly, Mr. Plasko sat down. All right. Let's be clear on this, so that there's no doubt. I'm happy to declare that a, that it carried the two-thirds, but let's ask again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Let me have a show of hands of the noes. All right. I have eight opposed. I will declare the vote based on the ayes 110 to eight. It carries and satisfies the two-thirds vote requirement. All right. Now we move on to Article 10. Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Indefinite postponement.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. With respect to the motion by, under Article 10, the motion is for indefinite postponement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. We now move on to capital outlay, and we have, under Article 11, we have three motions. Is there going to be a presentation by, Mr. Slater, are you making a presentation, or are you going to just make each of the motions as we come along? Because it might make sense, rather than reading off a motion and then having a presentation. Let's have the presentation. Who is making the presentation? Capital outlay. Mr. Maloney and Mr. Lane. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to speak for about three minutes, and then with your permission, I'm going to ask Mr. Matthew Lane, a member of our committee, to give a brief presentation on the current year's update. Good evening. I'm Tom Maloney, Chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee. The Capital Outlay Committee was formed by town meeting in 1959 and charged with bringing to the body an annual report on anticipated capital projects and expenditures over the coming years. Our committee consists of nine voting members and four non-voting ex officio members. Fiscal '19 members include from the Board of Selectmen Helen Donahue, from the Finance Commission David Hajar, from the School Committee Maeve Bodenhoffer. Ernie Pachakowski represents the Planning Board and Tim McDonough, the Board of Assessors. The moderators' four voting member appointments include Vice Chairman Kevin Conley, John Lyden, Matthew Lane, and me. Ex officio members include Town Accountant Tom McQuade, Town Treasurer Mark Good, Director of the Morrel Memorial Library Charlotte Cannelli, and General Manager Tony Mazuko. Our committee met twice this year, on February 4th and March 21st. Mr. Mazuko brought to us a draft of the capital improvement plan that you will find in Section 9 of your budget books. We hope you approve of the new expanded format. Projects have been codified. Explanations go into greater detail than they did in earlier reports. Fleet replacement schedules are attached. A comprehensive funding schedule can be found at the back, along with the debt service analysis. Contributing to the plan were the various department heads on the general government side, as well as Superintendent Thompson and his team from the School Department. Mr. McQuade and Mr. Good provided the debt summary. The lion's share of the credit for the end product, however, goes to Mr. Mazuko. We are here to answer questions about any specific proposals contained in that report. I do want to call your attention to the largest proposed category of improvements: the repaving of seven municipal parking lots and the installation of traffic signals at Washington and Short Streets in South Norwood. Specifically with relation to the parking lots, we believe that with the creation of the mixed-use overlay district last month, the town should demonstrate to property owners and to the public its own commitment to the revitalization of the central business district. By investing $1.2 million in our infrastructure today, we begin to lay the foundation for private development on a much larger scale in the future. In the end, the COC approved the plan that you have before you. The proposed funding schedule for the upcoming year's recommendations can be found on pages 68 through 71. We recommend free cash contribution of $486,900, borrowing of $3,210,000, utility expenditures through rates, Chapter 90 funding of $859,235. You will also find in the report a recommendation for $1.5 million to fund a feasibility study for a new middle school. The School Committee plans to bring that item forward at the fall town meeting if we agree to have one. As always, we recommend, we welcome suggestions on how to improve the capital improvement plan. Finally, the committee would like to thank the various department heads who came before us to discuss their respective plans. Their advice and assistance were invaluable in helping us put together a plan that we believe addresses many of the long-term capital investment needs of Norwood. And now, Mr. Moderator, I ask permission to turn the microphone over to Mr. Matthew Lane, who will give us an update on current projects.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Matthew Lane, District 5. Mr. Maloney, Mr. Mazuko, thought it'd be a good idea to just give a brief update on some of the larger items that were approved last year and where they are in the process, just to help you visualize and prepare for the things that we'd like you to vote on this year.
Okay. You can do the first slide. And, oh, thank you to Sue and Kathy for putting this together. This was voted on last year. This is the replacement of Engine 1. Engine 1, at the time it was voted on last year, was in year 18 of its 20-year lifecycle. And so diligently, we proposed that last year because it's about a two-year lead time. It's expected to be delivered in January, February of 2020. And is that the actual one, or is it? Maybe. No one would know the difference, but that's one getting built. Okay. The next slide details the police and fire, the replacement of the radio dispatch systems. These were voted on last year for a line item of $300,000. At the time that we voted on this last year, the systems were 15 years old and failing, and this was crucial operations. That's a current photo, and I think, if I'm right, this should be finished in June, early June. And that chair is gonna be replaced. Part of the appropriations from last year entailed replacing public work vehicles in the amount of $288,000. This is truck number 52. This was replacing a vehicle that had 161,000 miles on it at the time, and it was used mostly to provide roadside assistance to disabled DPW vehicles and equipment. And this was delivered on May 1st, I believe. So that's a brand-new truck. The multi-purpose tractor, so that was delivered in October of last year, and the tractor replaced had a failing engine, transmission, hydraulics, and this was $130,000 line item. And this is a picture of the DPW tractor. We got that in the fall, and that replaced a tractor from 1989. And that tractor had failed and was no longer able to be used. This is the one that works daily on ballparks and fields and parks. Great. The cemetery vehicles were voted on last year for a total of $84,000. There's two of them. This one is the crew chief vehicle. It's $44,000. This was approved last year. This replaced the crew chief's 2004 pickup that had over 120,000 miles on it, and it failed, or would not have passed the next inspection. And we got that in March of this year. This is the cemetery tractor. This was a $40,000 line item. It replaced a tractor that was about 25 years old and wasn't functioning any longer. And that we received in September of last year. The school tractor, this was delivered in August of this past year, replaced a tractor that wasn't functioning, and this performs a lot of grounds maintenance on the school This, the library chiller, it's been installed. I think the only thing missing is a sound barrier, if that's correct. So this is, it's installed, it's functioning, and I think it's, end of May is when the entire project should be done. This was a line item approved last year in the amount of $85,000. So this request was for funds to match grants from the Federal Aviation Administration and the Mass Aeronautics Commission that provided the airport with about $1 million. It could have been more. Tony, what was the final number for this?
I think it was, came in at just over $1 million.
Okay. Great. And that matching allowed runway improvement project, as well as facility improvements, to the town-owned building, and that's scheduled to be completed in July of this year. This project is completed. This was a line item approved last year to allow the cleaning and lining of about 4,000 feet of these cast-iron water mains and on various streets, Cottage Street, Wheelock, Maples, Vernon Street, and Day Street. Water main replacement. This project is underway. It started. It's scheduled to be done, I think, in July. And these two, this project, sorry. This is funded through a no-interest loan program provided by the MWRA. That's right outside the high school, and it looks great, and that was completed earlier this year. Pretty self-explanatory. That's a heater. Those are lights. Yep. You can see that. It's washer and dryer. Looks great. And this is the divider for the Civic Center. Then fancy new mats. Look great. Thank you for approving all of those items last year. It's really important to the town, and we appreciate it.
Is that the report of the Capital Outlay Committee?
Yes, sir. We're all set.
All right. So we have three motions, and do you have, Sue, do you have the more detailed motion? If you could put that up, please. Mr. Slater will read an abbreviated version, but the details are shown here. Rather than him calling off all those numbers, we have those numbers in the written motion, and it seems simpler to have him deal with the total. Of course, any questions on any of these items would be appropriate for discussion. Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the first motion of three on capital. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be appropriated for the said purposes indicated in order to finance the following capital projects of the town, that the sum of $486,000 is appropriated from surplus revenue for items in the following list, for a total of $486,900. Mr. Moderator?
A moment ago, I think you read $486,000, or I may have misheard you, but that the sum of $486,900 is appropriated. Is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Moderator.
And that's the bottom line. Yes, you want to speak to this?
No, just very briefly. As noted by Mr. Maloney and Mr. Lane, there will be three motions on capital items. The first one will be paid for, out of free cash. The second one will be a borrowing item, and the last one will be one which is paid out of rates.
The third one does involve borrowing under Chapter 44. The third one does involve borrowing?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Which, your comment on rates is you expect, then, the cost of that borrowing will be paid by rates.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Those are your comments on the first motion. Is that right?
Correct, Mr. Moderator.
Any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, then, we'll, Mr. Lynch?
Thank you. Ed Lynch, District 7. So on those three school computer laptop replacements, desktop, and the 42 for the network switch, does that have anything to do with the Chromebooks? And how are the Chromebooks working out? No? Through you?
The superintendent tells, is shaking his head, saying it has nothing, those numbers have nothing to do with the Chromebooks.
The laptops are for teachers. The desktops are for administrative assistance. The network switches are older switches. I believe those are here in the high school that need to be replaced. They're 10 years old. Those, I mean, so the switch, the network switches, you know, the Chromebooks would run off of the network, but they're not Chromebooks. These are Windows-type computers.
Thank you.
And most of them need to be upgraded to Windows 10, Mr. Moderator.
All right.
Just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Anyone else? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote. With respect to the first motion under Article 11, the motion calls for $486,900 to be appropriated from surplus revenue, otherwise known as free cash, and to be applied to the items on the list that is in front of us. On that motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. All right. The second motion, Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be appropriated for the said purposes indicated in order to finance the following capital projects of the town. Total of this action, $3,021,000. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $3,021,000 on the Chapter 44 of the General Laws or any other enabling authority. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Slater?
Is, you have, you know, heard me say several times during this town meeting, as well as this special town meeting, that, you know, the Finance Commission has always been concerned about the amount of money that we do borrow, because as we've always said, is a dollar more borrowing is a dollar less for either the general government or the school side. And we're very concerned that we don't borrow any more in a given year than we borrowed the previous year. That's also something which is consistent with the financial policies which we're developing. And I think what you'll see, if the slide comes up, that what this really shows is that if you look at the amount of borrowing on the tax levy this year in FY '20 versus what we'll see in FY '21, because the things that we borrow today won't show up until the FY '21 tax year, that it's essentially a wash. It's only a difference of maybe a little bit less than $20,000, which is basically the same number. So we feel confident recommending this number. We commend the Capital Outlay Committee, led by Mr. Maloney, for addressing that in such a way that we can get what we need as a town, protect their infrastructure, but also do it in a fiscally responsible way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Any discussion on this? Ms. Taylor?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Jean Taylor, District 8. Could somebody explain to me the $950,000 on the municipal lots? What was that money going to be spent on? For? To achieve?
Mr. Maloney?
Seven, seven municipal lots in the downtown area, the two adjacent to Town Hall, the Talbot Lot, which, the, behind Babel's, the Day Street Lot, Guilde Square, and I'm missing one.
The one in back of the theater?
The one in back of the theater, thank you. We're also doing the Senior Center Lot, and we're doing the, I mentioned the traffic intersection down at South Norwood, Washington and Short Streets. But those are the seven parking lots.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. When you're saying you're doing them, you're repairing them, you're...
Correct, repaving them.
This isn't any kind of a study. All right, I'm asking because we've always had an issue with parking for Uptown, it always comes up, it came up so many times in the course of time that I served on the Downtown Steering Committee. And I guess my question, and I don't know if it's the proper time to ask it, how many actual parking places, I know we did, I don't know how many studies, many, many, but we've never actually gotten an actual figure as to where those parking places are, especially those that are for Uptown, I see Mr. Plasko already getting ready to put his hand up. And I think it's important that we actually find out how many we have, how many are actually town-owned spots, because we actually, I think we're, we sometimes ticket the merchants uptown and people for over-parking. We don't have a place sometimes for them to go. We did have a program, I think, that we put together, unfortunately, it was never implemented correctly, and that was to give your merchants and some of their employees a placate to be able to park in the lot across on Manhattan Street, behind Babel's, which isn't Babel's anymore. But it never went into, you know, it really was never handled correctly. So I would really very much like to see somewhere along the line, this actual number, so that we can see, I mean, I know Biblos has some parking places. Do they own those? Are they theirs because the building itself is on that particular property? I think there's, I'd like to have it clarified at some point.
That's a good question, because my understanding is that some of those spaces in back of some of those buildings are actually part of those private properties. But does anybody, Mr. Maloney, you have a sense of how many parking spaces are available on the, in the areas that you're talking about repairing and repaving?
420 minus those owned by Biblos in those six lots downtown, that doesn't include the Senior Center. As for the ownership situation, we call the Biblos lots the Day Street across from Nappertandies. As for the ownership situation, I'd probably turn it over to somebody with far more knowledge in that, like Mr. Mazuko, or even higher than him, Mr. Plasko. Beyond that, there's only God, so...
Through you, Mr. Moderator, before that's answered. The lot that is by Babel's, the, I keep on calling it Babel's, I'm sorry.
You can call it the Babel's Lot.
Thank you.
We're going to do that for the rest of our lives, I think.
We are, we are. That there are people that park in there all day, and there's all different kinds of plackets and things on the windows. I honestly feel that we need to implement something for the merchants and their helpers uptown to be able to park somewhere. And I think in order to do that, we have to clear up the mess that's in there, people that are parking that maybe shouldn't be parking there all day. And if there's nobody to do it, I can't say hire, because we can't hire anybody, I'm to the point I'll volunteer to do it. Oh, no, I won't. It's something, it has to be done, I think.
You'd look wonderful in a meter maid uniform.
Oh, yeah, sure I would.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's see if we can get some answers to a couple of those questions. Mr. Mazuko, were you volunteering?
Well, if you, yes, Mr. Moderator, if you'd like a rundown of the total spaces available, we can do that very quickly. The Talbot Lot, 229, Town Hall, 26, Town Hall Annex, 57, Manhattan Street, 95, the Post Office Lot, 27, Central and Day Street, 76, that's the total, so I believe it matches up with what Mr. Maloney had. There is some shared ownership behind Biblos, and we have those marked out, we know what's owned by Biblos and what's owned by, or actually the individual that owns that building, and what's owned by the town. So if there's an enforcement issue, you can always report it to the police department if you feel people are parking overtime. But we do ticket in the downtown area, believe me, I get the ticket complaints in my office, and we have to deal with them. So we are ticketing when people are overtime. As for adding space, I don't know if that's been discussed, but resurfacing the lots will help us clarify the lines, it'll help us have better quality lots as well. I don't know if that answers your whole question, or...
Follow-up, Mrs. Taylor?
Thank you. It answered my question, but my concern was not that they didn't get parked uptown, it's that some of them did get parked uptown, but we're not telling them that they can park somewhere else because they're uptown and they're trying to run a store. That's, that was part of the question. But the rest of it was answered, yes, thank you.
Your concern is that we not ticket people who are there for a long time because they're actually running a business downtown?
Correct. But we need to be able to help them to, where can they park? And I do think that there's a lot of parking in the lot on Manhattan Street, behind Biblos, I mean, I'm sorry, behind Babel's, that needs to be checked.
All right. So that's, thank you for the suggestion. Okay, Mr. Brody?
Steve Brody, District 4. I like this format, now, I've gone through the CIP portion of the booklet, but I like these tables, are these motions also included in the booklet? Unless I missed them, I know they were indicated individually, but I couldn't find the summary like this, and I'd really appreciate it if in future years, these motions would be also included in the booklet along with the other information that's already in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brody. Perhaps that's something that can be done. Part of the issue is that the book has to go to press sometime, or prior to town meeting, and occasionally the numbers have not been set yet. But perhaps the, some effort can be made to look at that, so we are able to give more information in the budget book when people pick it up, download it, or whatever. And the manager's nodding his head on that, too. So you've got his ear on that, and you can follow up with him, too, if you want, in the course of the year. All right, Mr. Burgess?
Chuck Burgess, District 4. I have a question on the overnight parking allowed for the tenants of the Guilde Square Apartment Complex. Why is that allowed? What time do they have to vacate? And I'm concerned because this is a sort of a precedent, if we have the overlay and we have more residents downtown, will those residents be parking in our public lots? I know for a fact that one time last winter, it was very difficult to find a place to park in the parking lot, because there were at least eight cars, by my count, that were there overnight, weren't shoveled out after a snowstorm, and effectively reduced the number of parking spaces. So I'm wondering why that's allowed? Is this something that's been grandfathered? And I urge us to be cautious about the future as development happens, that more and more of our public lots will be used by overnight parking of residents downtown.
Which lot are you referring to?
The Post Office?
All right. Is there, is there an agreement or some practice that allows people from a particular building to use that overnight? Mr. Mazuko?
During a storm, they're supposed to be moved overnight if there's cars there. I don't believe that they should be parking overnight, I'd have to check if we've allowed any parking permits for that. To my knowledge, we haven't. Is it possible that a car is parked back there late in the police patrol, and then they don't ticket it? Sure, that's possible. Any new complexes coming downtown? If they wanted to use parking as part of their, if they wanted to use municipal parking as part of their approval process, they have to effectively lease those spaces for the town. So somebody can't come in and say, all right, I need 40 spaces, I've got 30, and there's just 10 in the town lot over there. They can't use that as part of their calculation, they don't have those spaces. Could they approach the town and say, I want to lease 10 of those spaces from you? Sure, that's a possibility. Could we create an overnight parking program where we do allow a certain number of tags in a certain number of lots? Sure, we could certainly do that.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, follow-up. I'm looking at the specific wording, that's on page 10 of 76. During the evening, the parking lot is used by customers of the nearby restaurant and overnight parking for the tenants of the Guilde Square Apartment Complex. What I'm wondering is, have we made an agreement? Do those people pay the town a fee for that privilege? They're specifically mentioned in here, that's why I mentioned it. Thank you.
All right. Agreement, there's, sorry, Mr. Moderator, there's no agreement on record.
I just find it, excuse me, Mr. Moderator, through you, I find it odd that that one particular building would be singled out for mention in this proposal. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Homewood?
Debbie Homewood, District 3. For me, we're redoing the lots, are we doing any kind of improvements to them other than the blacktop? Are we doing any trees? All right, I said it. And have we ever thought about asking the businesses to maybe kick in a little for beautification of the parking lots?
Beautification of the public parking lot?
Well, yes, because they, I know they pay taxes, and I'm not trying to penalize, just maybe a little beauti... Nobody wants to answer that question, do I have to?
No. Mr. Ryan, do you know what's planned if this is approved?
I do, Mr. Moderator, Mark Ryan, Director of Public Works, Town Engineer. The six lots downtown will be new asphalt, obviously, handicap-accessible improvements, granite curb where possible, and we are trying to put as many trees in as possible, Mrs. Homewood.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
And if I could just add one item to that, we're also trying to make sure that a few of the lots have the infrastructure for electric vehicle charging stations, so that we could eventually, in the next year or two after the lots are done, deploy that.
Cut off. So have we thought about asking the businesses if they'd like to contribute anything?
We certainly can, they already contribute to some of the flower planting downtown. Some towns do what's known as a business improvement district, where if enough businesses in the district vote to do so, they're levied a charge that goes to those things like beautification. We can certainly ask them, they're the same businesses that get hit up for every other charity fundraiser and everything else. And again, these are municipal lots, it is our property.
I can appreciate that, and I'm, I understand that they pay taxes, and they're, we love the businesses. I'm just wondering if their customers would appreciate a better-looking lot, other than just hot top and granite, which, I appreciate the granite. Mr. Ryan, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Homewood. Ms. Taylor? Did you want to speak? I had to go around the room before I call on you for a second time. That's what I have to do.
Jean Taylor, District 8. I just wanted to comment on the merchants. I just happen to be talking to a couple of the merchants this week, and they are hurting, some of them are hurting. I'm sure that they would love to donate, but they don't have the money to do it. They're struggling right now, some of them. Thank you.
In the back, gentleman there?
George Durante, District 3. My question is, given that we just passed the mixed-use overlay district, are there any plans in the immediate future to, to send out a request for proposals for any of these municipal parking lots before we decide to pave them? To redevelop them?
Mr. Mazuko?
Yeah, the answer to that question is no, we don't foresee selling any of these lots anytime soon. We'd be pretty reluctant to want to give up what property we do have downtown to maintain some control. That's not to say that a developer couldn't approach the town with a, with an offer, but let's say if next year a developer said they want to buy a lot, we just paved, we're just going to have to work that into the price, if it was in our interest to do so, but we're going to want to maintain some control of the ability to do parking down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durante. Anybody else? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. The motion, this involves borrowing, so it requires a two-thirds vote. Motion number two, under capital outlay, is for a total of $3,021,000. And we are authorizing borrowing under the motion, and the language that was read by Mr. Slater, and which was on the screen earlier, these are the purposes for which the money is proposed to be raised. Requiring a two-thirds vote on that, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried unanimously. All right, Mr. Slater? The third of the three motions.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be appropriated for the said purposes indicated in order to finance the following water and soil infrastructure capital projects of the town. That the sum of $500,000 is appropriated for water rates, for water main cleaning and lining, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $500,000 on the Chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
All right, thank you. No comment on that, Mr. Slater?
None, Mr. Moderator.
All right. Any discussion on this? So this is relining of water pipes, is that right? Mr. Ryan, okay. Any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. The motion is to authorize borrowing of $500,000, which will ultimately be paid for by water rates. And the usual language about any premiums received by the town on the borrowing, the usual application of that, requiring a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. And that has carried 110 to 1. All right. That's it for capital outlay, Article 11. We move on to Article 12. Mr. Slater?
Indefinite postponement, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Slater.
This is just the housekeeping article for unpaid bills, we do not have any unpaid bills.
Okay. The motion is for indefinite postponement. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. We move on to Article 13. Now, this involves community preservation fund monies, and the Community Preservation Committee is going to come down front and take the seats in front of me. Mr. Greeley, there'll be a presentation. How long do you expect the presentation will take, and who will be presenting?
So...
So you want to present for each separate, all right, Article 13, we have one motion, Article 14, we have one motion, Article 15, we have four motions, is that correct? And you want to present for each of those separate sets of motions, under, in other words, under each of the articles?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. You may proceed, then. This is actually Mr. Slater's motion, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Slater, I guess since we're going to have a presentation on each motion, why don't you make the motion? Then Mr. Greeley will lead the presentation for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission, voted based upon the recommendation of the Capital Preservation Committee, the Finance Commission moves that the following sums be transferred from community preservation fund revenues and reserved for the purposes indicated, a total of $693,513.
All right. And we now move on to Mr. Greeley.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, town meeting members, thank you, Finance Commission. Basically, this is the first full year that the Community Preservation Committee has had a full cycle. We appreciate the... Um, we appreciate the, um, the 2016, uh, Town Meeting and Town Ballot, um, approval, um, to adopt the Community Preservation Act. Um, the Community Preservation Act was adopted by the State of Massachusetts in the year 2000, and, uh, 2018, fiscal year 2018, was the first full year that Norwood, um, adopted and collected taxes relative to the, uh, Community Preservation Act. Um, I'll briefly go through these slides. Um, there are some state requirements, the reason this is a little choppy, and we appreciate your patience, um, we actually have to comply with a number of, um, state requirements in the way that Town Meeting votes for these articles. So, thank you in advance for your patience. Um, before I go into, um, the details up on the screen, I just want to acknowledge and, um, personally thank all of our members. Uh, John Hall is our Vice Chair. Um, I'll just, um, run down the list, Cheryl Doyle, John Apria, Peter McFauland, Helen Donahue, Patty Starr Griffin, Debbie Homewood. Uh, we do currently have one vacancy, and we've also got three former members who contributed significantly during this past fiscal year, Ann Scoble, Bob Thornton, and Judith Homewood, uh, Ju-- I'm sorry, Howard, sorry. Debbie Homewood, Judith Howard, thank you. Um, we also, uh, wanted to thank, um, Paul Halkiotis and Pat DeShanes in the planning, Executive Planning Department. Tom McQuade and Mark Good also contributed throughout the course of the year. We believe that, um, in this first, uh, these first few slides, uh, we'll be presenting details on the process that we followed. All of our meetings, with the exception of one executive session meeting this past year, all of our meetings are open to the public, and, uh, public attendance and feedback is more than welcome. Um, we've, uh, gone through a significant community outreach effort over the course of the year. Uh, we've had three public hearings. Um, as I said, all of our meetings are open, and we've had, um, welcome and significant input from the community, so we appreciate that. Um, all of our documents, including this PowerPoint, either already are or will be available this week on the, uh, Town website, the Community Preservation Committee website. We believe ultimately on Article Fifteen, um, that we're proposing four di- four different projects for your review and hopefully approval. Um, we've, we've deliberated for literally months on these projects. Uh, we wanted to, when we get to those, we'll thank the project proponents. Um, we believe that these projects offer value to the community. Um, we believe that these four projects extend the usefulness of these town resources and facilities, and ultimately, we, um, believe that these four projects improve the access to the community, um, and at least a couple of the projects incre- increase the, um, ADA compliance and ADA accessibility, which is, um, one of the foremost, uh, concepts of community preservation. Um, so briefly getting, getting to the, um, uh, the screens, and I will, um, this document, um, by the way, we printed about 125 or 130 of these, they have been available, uh, at the door, starting with Special Town Meeting last month. Um, I believe they've all, uh, been taken, so thank you very much. Um, so throughout the course of this past year, um, we have created, um, what we call a needs assessment for the town. Uh, basically, that's the outline, that's the overarching document, uh, for which all the project applications, um, are filtered. Um, we have had input from all of the main, um, uh, contributors, basically, uh, which include the Board of Selectmen in their role as recreation commissioners, uh, the Housing Authority, uh, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the Historical, Historical Commission. We had an open, um, open hearings back in the fall, uh, project, uh, proponents submitted applications in the October-November timeframe. Uh, the CPC reviewed these projects in public forum, um, all the way from December through April, and these projects significantly changed over this four months, and, uh, we believe what we're proposing are much better projects, again, through the help and the, um, and the patience and the contributions of the pro- uh, project proponents. Um, we have assembled all the documents that you've seen, that you will see tonight, along with the, uh, Town Meeting warrant articles. Um, one, one point is that, um, the Community Preservation, uh, articles, uh, they're not, they don't require two-thirds unless there's, uh, borrowing. Uh, one of the, um, tools available to the Community Preservation Committee, and, uh, in accordance with the Act, is that we can't, we are allowed to propose borrowing, uh, to fund projects. We're not doing that tonight, but just food for thought for future, we will, uh, at some point, I'm sure we'll reach a point where we propose borrowing, uh, to fund a project. Um, all the Town Meeting, all the articles in front of Town Meeting, uh, simply require a majority vote, and, uh, these funds, um, will be, um, they are currently available, um, and the projects could start immediately, but, um, given the timetable, we believe the projects will, um, start sometime after July first, uh, 2019. So, um, the next slide is a, uh, it's a pie chart, and I'll briefly describe it, but as far as income, revenue, um, the revenue that arrives to the Community Preservation Committee, and where we, where we receive our money and propose the funds, it comes from two points, uh, two sources. The majority of the funds come from, um, additional taxation that was voted, again, in 2016. Um, essentially, there's a 1% surcharge on the tax, on your tax bill. It's not a 1% tax, it's a tax, it's a 1% surcharge on your tax, which is a little bit difficult, but, uh, essentially, in year one, people paid about $34 for the year into the CPA fund. So it's a fairly small number, uh, when Town Meeting and the ballot, uh, were approved, that 1% surcharge was approved at that time. Um, so the, the, the revenue, and the second piece of the money that comes in, uh, it's a much smaller amount, um, it comes from the Massachusetts, um, Community Preservation Trust Fund, and in 2000 FY20, uh, we are, we estimate, and we've got confirmation that this is from the state, that we'll receive roughly $72,000 from the state. So there's a combination of $693, $93,000 that we anticipate will come to the, uh, CPA fund for Norwood next year. Um, the three pie slices, we're required, in accordance with the law, we're required to take, um, a minimum of 10% of that revenue, and put it into the pie slices on the right-hand side, uh, into historical use, into, uh, open space and recreational use of land, and into, um, housing, um, community housing. So those slices of the pie get 10% of the revenue. There's another 5% slice, the red slice at the top, um, which is a maximum administrative expense slice that the board, the community, the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, um, is required to put a cap on 5% of our administrative expenses. And then the majority, that purple slice on the left-hand side, um, the remaining money goes into what they call an unallocated fund. All of this is governed and under the control, it's governed by the, by the, uh, Community Preservation Act, uh, but it's, it's under the, uh, responsibility of the committee. Um, moving right along, we've got three articles that we're present, presenting tonight, Articles Thirteen, Fourteen, and Fifteen. Um, in the top right-hand side, you'll see Article A, because we didn't know what the number was, but that's essentially Article Thirteen. Um, and in that Article Thirteen, we'll basically be allocating those pie slices that we just showed you. So we've got three dedicated, uh, 10% slices going into three different, uh, reserve funds. We've got 5% going into the administrative, and just because of the requirements, we actually have to allocate the remaining money into an unreserved, uh, fund. This next slide, uh, basically just gives you that description, um, numerically. You can see across the top, it's got the descriptions, housing, historical, open space, recreational use of land, and that, that's, you might look at that as two different concepts, but they share that 10% slice. Um, so those are two different categories, that's one combined category. There's 5% that goes into administrative, and on the right-hand side, you'll see the town, the total funds that are going in. The top line, FY20 local receipts, that's $622,000 roughly, um, that's from your tax bills, thank you. Um, we appreciate it, and we hope to, uh, uh, use your money wisely. Um, this, the next line, seven, roughly $72,000 comes from the state match. Um, that number has declined over time, City, the City of Boston, for instance, has recent, more recently joined the CPA, and because they're a big player, um, they have, uh, they have, uh, dived in and, uh, taken a, the, a good chunk of that trust fund money. So our, our portion is declining over time. Um, the second slide, Article B, uh, which would be Article Fourteen, um, we specifically, where there's a state, one of the state requirements, we have to, um, not only ask you to authorize, but also ask you to appropriate the administrative funds, and we'll just grab that in a, in a minute, when we get to that article. And Article C, which is Article Fifteen, is where we're act, where, where we will actually propose, uh, the four projects. Um, the four projects, um, one of the slides describes them as improvements to the Bond Street Playground, the restoration and reconstruction of the Elliott Field, which is also the known, also known as the Lower Balch Playground, uh, construction of an outdoor pavilion shade structure near the lower pond at Alavesos Park, uh, which, um, off Entecott Street and Walpole Street. Um, essentially, it's across the, across the brook from the, um, Big Y supermarket. And the last recommendation, we'll have in Article Fifteen, is the recor- um, restoration of the Memorial Carolin. Uh, the last slide right now, before we get into the specific articles, um, it is just a total, um, after the, assuming that we get through Article Fifteen, and we, we have assumed that those four articles will be, uh, adopted and approved by Town Meeting, but after that, um, if, after there's, those roughly $500,000 in proposed projects, we'll still have, with FY20's receipts, roughly $1.1 million, uh, for future spending. So that's my overall presentation, sir. We'll go into Article Thirteen right now.
All right.
And I think Mr. Slater has already read the art.
Mr. Slater's already read the motion.
Can do it again for, uh...
Mr. Slater, do you want to comment on the motion? Uh, any further than what you've already done by reading it?
Uh, no, Mr. Moderator.
All right. So the motion is up in front of us, is... Mr. Greeley, do you propose to say anything more on this?
No, sir.
Okay.
So these, this corresponds to that pie slice we were just looking at?
All right, we'll open it up, then, for discussion. Is that Mr. Clark? No. I'm sorry. Gentleman.
Hi, uh, James Bowers, District Seven. Um, I understand why you're setting aside, uh, reserved amounts where you are required to spend 10% on the open space, the historic and the, and the housing. Um, why are you doing a set aside for administrative when that's a maximum? What happens if you don't spend the 5%?
Sure. If I could, Mr. Moderator, um, so essentially, they, all four of those steps are in compliance with the, uh, Community Preservation Act. Um, we're required to put a minimum of 10% into those three reserves, and we're, and the, they're, they're essentially the opposite, there's three minimums and a maximum. So they, uh, the administrative expenses for the, uh, that we're proposing in Article Fourteen, for instance, is, uh, just roughly $35,000, $35,000. Just to give you a flavor of that, just to ruin the surprise when we get to Article Fourteen, um, but we, Town Meeting had authorized $33,000 last year, of which, uh, through this point in FY19, we've spent roughly six. So what happens at the end, it's an automatic, um, replenishment with whatever we don't spend in administrative expenses, it automa- automatically goes back into the unallocated reserve.
Thank you.
So the, it's, we're, we frankly, because we're so new at this, um, we're, we're proposing that we take the maximum, but we're trying to be as, as frugal as possible and just, uh, we're not quite learning on the go, but we are, um, expanding what we spend out of administrative.
Right. So that does revert to the general unallocated fund?
The, whatever...
Anything's unspent is, it reverses?
Whatever we do not spend goes back to the, the general unallocated fund.
Great, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Anything further? Ms. Slater?
Jerry Slater, District Four. Kind of a follow-up on that, Mr. Greeley. Um, what are administrative and operating expenses have you expended, and what do you expect to expend in that category?
All right. Mr. Greeley?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, so, I will talk whilst we put a slide up. So in this past, in this current fiscal year, um, we basically, um, we, we've, the Community Preservation Act has been in, in force in the town of Norwood for FY18, the current year is FY19, and we're proposing FY20. So in FY18, tw- roughly $27,000 was moved into administrative, and we didn't spend anything. So that whole $27,000 came back into the unallocated reserve. In FY19, this current year, um, we have, we have thirty, the, the, last year's Town Meeting, uh, vote, moved $33,000, or 5% of the maximum 5%, into this administrative reserve, and so far through, actually through this week, we've spent roughly $6,000. And that $6,000, um, just shy of $3,000, there is an, an organization which has been, um, really, to, to be honest, it's been invaluable to us throughout this course of the, um, actually, the last two years. Um, the Community Preservation Coalition, which is a coalition of not only cities and towns, but also related parties like, uh, trustees of the reservation, and, um, entities which would be on the receiving end, but they're also serve as consultants to this coalition. Um, but that, we pay, every city and town that adopts the CPA, uh, pays basically a fee, a membership fee, if you will. So out of the $6,000 we spent this year, just shy of $3,000 went to the, uh, Coalition. Um, we also, excuse me, we also did a, an appraisal, one of the projects which was initially brought in front of the committee, uh, but it has since been tabled because of, um, just complications relative to purchase. Um, we've actually done an appraisal of the Saint Street Lot, and we, uh, we completed the appraisal, um, the appraisal cost was split between the, what, what could be the buyer, we the buyer, but it also the, the proposed seller, uh, we split the cost 50/50. Um, so that was roughly another $2,700. And then the rest of this, about $650, which was spent in, um, newspaper, um, advertising, printing, et cetera. So $6,276 through this week. So the, and to the point of, sorry, to the point of the funds, unspent funds, going back to the unallocated, right now, we would, if the year ended tomorrow, we'd send $27,150 back into the unallocated pool.
Ms. Slater?
Follow, yeah, follow-up, um, to you, Mr. Moderator. So the unallocated still stays within the CPA, um, as part of the unal- unallocated general fund, correct?
Correct. The, Mr. Moderator, through you, um, once, once funds are, uh, taxed and collected that are earmarked for the CPA, they, they're basically frozen and limited to strictly CPA-related spending. Um, so even though we're carving out 5% and we're sending it into this admin fund, it's still in the umbrella, it's still in the pie, again, so that, whatever is not spent, it goes back into the unallocated. So it stays within the CPA, it doesn't, it, it's not available for any other use, not operating funds, not anything else.
Again, through you, Mr. Moderator, follow-up. Totally respect everybody who's on the committee, but what sort of assurances do we have from a Town Meeting standpoint around fiscal responsibility, having, um, seems like a category that you can kind of do it, fit anything as an administrative operating expense? So, um, do you have a philosophy as a committee around how to ensure that that money is spent appropriately?
Anyone want to field that question?
I see everybody smiling, and I'm not...
I was on the FIDCOM for 14 years, so I'm not qualified to answer that question, but...
Mr. Hall, you want to take that?
Just to clarify, uh, John Hall, District Six, member of the committee, uh, just to clear, make sure I heard you right, Mrs. Slater, that you're, you're talking specifically about the administrative funds?
Correct.
Okay. Um, at any one time, that is only going to be up to 5% of the year's receipts, so it's, it's a rather modest fund, you, you can't run parties with it. Um, the, we have mentioned that we've used one of, uh, our biggest expenses for the past year was an assessment. was an assessment. Other towns that have been doing this for longer than we have, have assessments fairly often because they get proposals...
Do you mean, Mr. Hall, I'm sorry, but you mean appraisals?
I'm sorry.
Not an assessment?
Appraisals.
Thank you.
They get appraisals fairly often because they are considering proposals that involve purchasing land. That is the principal way that the Open Space Group achieves its objectives. We've also been in some early discussions with the town, and we may be spending some administrative money for secretarial service, as most committees already do. So it, it is not difficult to run your way through a small pot of money with a handful of legitimate expenses of the order of magnitude we're talking about here. And we come in here each year and tell you what we did. So either before the fact, after the fact, or during the fact, I think you can have high confidence.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right. Mr. Kai?
Jeffrey Kai, District 7, through you, Mr. Moderator. With the CPF Unreserved Fund, are there projects that money, that $450,000 is going towards either in this article or upcoming articles?
Mr. Greeley?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Yes, just to ruin the surprise again, Article 15, we actually have to identify not only what the projects are, but also where the funds will come from. So when Mr. Slater reads Article 15, we actually have, it's a little time-consuming, and thanks for your patience in advance, but because of the state law, we actually have to read each one of those four articles and identify the source of that money, and we have to vote on each one of them. So we'll get to your, yes, to get...
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I was just concerned because, you know, sometimes the state gives money out to do something, and then they retract it for whatever reason, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything further? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. On the first motion, the motion is for $693,513, as shown on the screen and commented on. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. All right, we move on now to Article 14, a motion from the Finance Commission. Mr. Slater?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission, voted, based upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the Finance Commission moves that the following sum be transferred from CPF Reserve for administrative expenses and appropriated for the following purpose: FY20, CPF Administrative and Operating Expenses, $34,676.
All right, so we just voted a moment ago to transfer from the fund certain amounts and reserve them. Now we're being asked to appropriate some of that money. In this case, we're being asked to appropriate the money for administrative and operating expenses. Just want everybody to be clear on that. Okay. You have no further comment on that, Mr. Slater?
Uh, no, Mr. Moderator, you were correct in your analysis.
Thank you. I hope that's on tape. Mr. Greeley, is there anything further to say on this, other than what we've already said?
Very, very briefly, Mr. Moderator, that $34,000, just in, in, I guess, in, in response to the prior, prior appreciated questions, the biggest item out of that $35,000, and again, their $34,676, we're going into the new year with what we expect to be expanded, project proposals, some of which we, we fully expect that we'll need land surveying and legal, legal assistance and title reviews. We did an appraisal this past year, but those are things that we basically have to farm out to an outside consultant, and frankly, that, going forward, that's probably going to be the biggest, the biggest use of these administrative funds. Again, we're, we're new at this, and, and we're, as, as we build momentum here, we're really creating this without fully knowing what's in store, because every year's different, and there'll be a different suite of, of projects being proposed. But out of that $34,000, we estimate that $15,000, we budgeted $15,000 for outside professional, including land reviews, appraisals, legal, including general and bond counsel and surveying. So all those things, similar to what the town does, every time they, you know, go out and look to acquire a piece of land, we, we basically have to be self, self-funded, and we need to go through those, those ourselves. There's another, as Mr. Hall mentioned, there's a possibility, we haven't quite got our arms around this, but we will probably be looking for some administrative support next year. And out of that number, there's another roughly $7,000 that frankly, we don't know, going into this year, we, to be honest with you, we really don't know what we'll need that money for, but we're trying to match the $34,676. And just as is the case in the current year, whatever we don't use, we're going to try to be as frugal as possible, whatever we don't use goes back into the unallocated fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. The motion under Article 14 is for the appropriation from the Community Preservation Fund's Reserve, and to appropriate it for administrative and operating expenses, $34,676. On that, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. We move on now to Article 15, and on Article 15, we have a total of four motions. Is that correct, Mr. Slater?
Uh, correct, Mr. Moderator.
All right, you want to take us to the first one, please?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission, voted, based upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the Finance Commission moves that the following sums be transferred from Community Preservation Fund revenues and appropriated for the purposes indicated: Bond Street Playground, project amount $88,000, source of funding $44,000 from CPF, Open Space and Recreational Use of Land Reserve, and $44,000 from CPF Unreserved Fund balances.
Thank you, Mr. Slater? All right. No further comment from the FinCom, correct?
Uh, correct, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Greeley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as is the case with all four of these projects, we've got three very quick slides just describing the, the scope of the projects. In this case, the Bond Street Project, Bond Street Playground Project has been proposed by Travis Fowley, the Director of the Recreation Department, which Travis just landed from a trip to Washington DC, and he's scrambling at speed limit to get here, but I don't think he'll be here in time. But basically, the proposal is to resurface the Bond Street Playground. It's one of the, one of, or it is the most heavily used playground in the town of Norwood. Right now, anyone who's familiar with it, it's covered in, the flooring is all wood chips, and that's good to a certain point, but it, it has limited ADA access, for instance. It's subject to the weather, impacts for the weather. So the proposal is by the Recreation Department, as the proponent and manager of this project, to remove all the wood chips and resurface it with a rubberized, rubberized safety surface. There's also, so on that, on that slide right there, Bond, Bond Street would be at the top, and so leading into the playground from the sidewalk, the part of the proposal is to build new access paths, essentially, that would allow anyone in wheelchair, for instance, or a stroller, to better access the playground area. And then the third slide is just the detail to that $88,000 number. The poured, poured-in-place rubber safety surface, $67,850. Edge, edging, curbing is another $12,150. There's a 10% contingency for $8,000, for a total of $88,000. And Mr. Slater already read the two sources for this funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion on the matter? Ms. Donnelly Matthews?
Julie Donnelly Matthews, District 3. As a heavy user of this playground, there have been some improvements so far, and I'm wondering what impact this will have on those. There's been some new playground equipment that has been installed. Also, the picture only shows like one half of the playground, the other half of the playground is where the swings are, and there's all sand in that area. In fact, I don't even know if there are any wood chips, I, I don't remember there being any wood chips. To me, it seems like it's all sand, which has benefits and, and not.
All right, Mr. Farley, can you answer the questions, please?
Yes, so I apologize for my tardiness, I am a new uncle, so, we just got back from DC, and I literally just got off the, just got out of Logan, so it's, I had to run here. Yeah, so over the last few years, we actually put an extension on, we added three new elements, a seesaw, a half-circle, and another element, so we've been adding there. We actually most recently replaced the wooden truck with a fire truck. We're hoping that, Mr. Greeley hit on, the poured rubber area will make it a lot more ADA-friendly, we're hoping to add maybe one or two more ADA elements in that area as well, and then you were correct, we're, on that far side, it's just sand, we're hoping to add another ADA swing, right now we don't have any ADA swings there. So right now, it is hopefully going to stay wood chips in the middle area, the poured rubber area is actually only going to be the left third of the playground, and then the rest is going to remain sand and wood chips.
Thank you. All right, anything further? In the back?
Hi, Amy D., District 3. My only comment about the Bond Street is, in that middle area where you might keep the wood chips is, there's a tree there with the, the stump, or not the stumps, but the roots coming out, and that's kind of like a danger zone if you're, like, kids tripping over it.
We will take that into consideration.
And that's all, but other than that, I love the rubber ground, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. D. Mr. Ferris?
Thank you. Ed Ferris, District 8. Poured rubber, rubber surfaces in general tend to get extremely hot in the summer. How do you plan on cooling that? To maintain it?
That is correct. We can hopefully add a few more trees, one of the actually plus sizes as well, is that with the wood chip areas, the areas that are snow, tend to have snow on them longer. The poured rubber should be theoretically cleared off sooner, so it's kind of a double-edged sword, but yes, it's, it's, it is a, it is an issue moving forward, especially with the, the hot summer days. It's the same thing with the playground elements, we ask parents just to be cautious with it. I mean, the slides heat up really fast, so as a parent, you just have to keep an eye on it, obviously, if it's a super hot day, just make sure your child's playing correctly and not falling, not playing on the poured rubber if you can. Obviously, you have the sand area, you have the wood chips area, you can utilize other elements that are outside the poured rubber area if, if need be, if it gets too, too hot.
Has there been any thought, Mr. Moderator, to adding sprinklers to the area to deal with that?
To be honest with you, we have not, we could definitely look at it, I could work with Mr. Ryan and look at how much irrigation would cost to add to the project, I'm more than happy to look into that, if need be.
I would just suggest it for the ADA areas, just because
Yeah.
the rubber can get extremely hot, and also you limit the life of it, as it heats up every summer, it'll deteriorate faster and fall apart.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris? Anything further? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. With respect to Article, the first motion under Article 15, the motion is for a total of $88,000 for improvements to the Bond Street Playground. On that, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. Okay, the second motion under Article 15, Mr. Slater?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission, voted, based upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the Finance Commission moves that the following sums be transferred from Community Preservation Fund revenues and appropriated for the purposes indicated: Lower Balch Rehabilitation, project amount $142,476, source of funding $67,000, some CPF Open Space and Recreational Use of Land Reserve, and $75,476 from CPF Unreserved Fund balances.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Greeley, do you have anything on this?
Yes, sir, thanks, Mr. Moderator. This is one of the projects, briefly, this is one of the projects that has evolved, and frankly, we think it's a lot more value added to the, as a proposal than it was originally. The reason, these numbers seem a little odd, but we're proposing, $67,000 come from open space and recreational use of land. That $67,000 was the original proposal by Mr. Fowley, which deals only with the, the lower playground. If you, I don't know if you folks are familiar with it, but the Balch School is at the top of this, top right. This whole area, there's a berm, and there's a 12 to 15-foot roughly drop from school level to playground, 15 feet maybe, ish? We'll go with that. So basically, what was originally proposed were, there's a number of different areas that at this point, it's the old skate park, and really, anybody that's familiar with that area, it's, it's definitely outlived its usefulness, and I think what Mr. Fowley has proposed here is definitely a facelift, and, and we hope it significantly increases the value of that property. Where the, this is, this is, these are improvements to the, to the recreational section of this physical area, so we've kind of left, once we dropped down, stepped down the stairs, we've essentially left the school department property, and we vented the recreational department property, just to delineate the two. The second item that Mr. Slater read, the $75,476, in addition to Mr. Fowley's proposal of dealing with the playground area, we also took advantage of this proposal, we wanted to improve the access and the, and the, and the accessibility, but they, you know, just make it a much more user-friendly facility. So the $75,000 addition is actually ADA-compliant ramping. In the bottom right-hand corner, this isn't specifically, this isn't the design that will specifically be used, but this would provide, this bottom right-hand corner would essentially create a access path in a ramp style to get from that step down from the Balch Playground, I'm sorry, the Balch Parking Area. So we've taken, you know, we've taken advantage of this, and we think that it will just frankly open up the lower field and lower playground area in a significant and beneficial way. So that's why there's two different pieces to that. Thank you.
All right, any discussion on this? Ms. Quinn?
Sarah Quinn, District 2. Will you be touching the bathrooms at all at the Balch? Because they're gross.
Are you talking about outside?
They're associated with the fields and the playground. That's how I know they're gross.
Does any of this project involve the bathrooms?
I can attest that they are in fact gross, but none of the project's spending is directed towards the facilities.
I mean, is that something that you could consider, given that kids and parents use the restroom?
One, yeah.
And maybe making them handicap-friendly, too.
Thank you. Great, great proposal. One of the, one of the requirements we've, we've gone through, not, not to give you a short answer, but we've gone through a number of public hearings, and we've really kind of evolved, helped this project evolve. This screen shows you the components of that, $142,000, the facilities are not here, and frankly, we were trying to deal with, you know, certainly, we could have taken a even further, further step back and looked at the facilities, but we didn't. One of the limitations of the, one of the reasons why these are broken out into four different motions is that town meeting has three options. One, you can either accept the project, you can outright reject the project, or you can reduce the scope and reduce the dollar amount of the project, but you, but town meeting doesn't have the option by, by law, does not have the option to increase it, in case you were thinking of that.
in case you were thinking of that. But one thing that we could certainly do is come back next year, either in the fall or next May, and, you know, if somebody wanted. These, one other thing, these projects are not our projects. They're not, we can't, we're not able to propose them. We're just basically the conduits and the filters and the recipients. So if someone wanted to come forward with that type of project, we'll help you. But to answer your question, no, they're not part of the project.
Mr. Hall?
Also, please remember that we're authorized to do projects in this area for open space and recreational use of land only. And so getting off into a structure, even a closely allied structure, would be outside of the scope of what CPA funds can be used for.
Mr. Hall, are you suggesting that if somebody builds some project under the CPA, they can't build public restrooms with it? Is that your understanding of the law?
It, it's at least something that needs to be looked at closely. They're concerned that what you're doing in this category is addressing the recreational use of the land. Now, what constitutes that is going to be a case-by-case basis. But I wanted to put up a caution flag, if you will, for any proposal to address this in a new project next year, that if we got such a project, we need to seek advice as to whether it can be made relevant. And I see my colleague would like to add to that, if that's allowed.
Mr. McFarland, did you want to add to that?
Peter McFarland. That's a maintenance issue, a repair issue, and that's something that can't be done. If we had developed the property, we could do it originally. But since it's a maintenance issue, it's not CPA-funded. So that, right now, and plus, the other part of it, too, wasn't proposed in the application. We didn't expand it to that point because of the maintenance issue of it, so.
So the short answer is it might be nice, but it can't be done. Okay. All right, anything further? Yes, who was that? Mr. Shaughnessy?
Kevin Shaughnessy, District Six. Just curious if, it sounds like you're making it more handicap-accessible. If someone were to come forward with a proposal to make the bathrooms the same, would that fit in, then? Or would that be something we could look at?
Mr. Farley, have you got the answer to that?
I just had something I want to add, kind of touching on Mrs. Quinn's question.
Can you answer the question?
I cannot, right now.
Okay. All right. I think we've answered the question on Ms. Quinn. So is there anybody who can answer the question? Or is it, Mr. Shaughnessy, you're really asking if sometime down the road, somebody builds restrooms there? They're handicapped accessible and user-friendly and so forth? Is that what you're asking? And, and so the CPC is telling us that they, they don't know that they can do that. They certainly can't do it on what's before us because it wasn't part of the proposal, and we're not allowed to add to the proposal. Whether they could do it on a future project or in a future version of this project, they're not able to answer, I guess, tonight. And Mr. McFarland believes it wouldn't fall on that. So we're not talking about bathrooms at the balch, as part of the balch project, any further, because we can't do it. But the commission has, the committee, I think, has heard people in terms of the concerns and may be able to give us a more detailed explanation. I'll leave it at that. Mr. Burgess?
Chuck Burgess, District Four. Not to belabor, belabor the issue, but who's responsible for those restrooms now?
Recreation Department? Recreation Department.
Well, then I would urge them to take a look at the current restrooms and see what they can do out of their existing budget. Thank you.
All right. Anything further on the matter before us? Seeing none, then we'll, what? Mr. Farley, are you speaking to the matter before us, or are you speaking to maybe fixing the restrooms? All right. I'll allow you a brief moment, but we really have to be mindful of what's before us, not what we'd like to have before us.
This will be very brief. We, we do know as a department that the bathrooms are in need of repair. We're actually trying to work on a bigger issue because we want to correct both the storage and the bathroom issue, and just to make that one big building. So it is something I've talked to Mr. Mazuko about. It is on our radar. We are hoping to do that, hopefully, very soon. But I do apologize. We can work harder to make that a cleaner, cleaner space for the residents as well.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody further? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. On this motion, the proposal for the lower balch rehabilitation is for a total of $142,476. We've been given the source of funding of $67,000 from the open space and recreational use of land reserve, and the balance, $75,476 from the unreserved fund balances. On that, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. We move on now to the fourth motion. Mr. Slater?
I think it's the third one, Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry. Right, the page is third one. Pages were stuck together.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission, voted based upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the Finance Commission moves that the following sums be transferred from Community Preservation Fund revenues and appropriated for the purposes indicated. Lower Pond Pavilion. Project amount, $46,965. Source of funding, CPF, open space and recreational use of land reserve.
All right, Mr. Greeley?
Mr. Moderator. The project proponent on this is Ramonda Morgan and the Conservation Commission. We appreciate their input. These next two slides, so that, so this is the area in the right-hand side. This is the area with this, where this pavilion will land. And I'll show you that on the next slide. Just to orient you, this is Elliot, I'm sorry, Endicott Street. And then this is the top left-hand corner. That's Wallpole Street. And then Big Y, there's a, on the other side of the, of the stream is the Big Y supermarket, just to orient people. The blue spots, there would be a handful of parking, related parking spots for this. The next slide shows you a rendering of what the pavilion would look like. Looking towards essentially, if you look over the pavilion, that would be looking in the direction of the Big Y parking lot, just to orient you. On the right-hand side, there's a, I don't know how many unit, apartment or condo unit. And the back, those cars are backed, are pulled in from Endicott Street. The third slide on this, the $46,965 is broken down accordingly. Pavilion, concrete pad, which the pavilion would rest on. The Conservation Commission has contributed, not part of the $46,000, but in addition, the Conservation Commission has funded two other pieces from their own budget for solar lighting and planters and landscaping. You're not voting on those. You're only voting on the $46,965. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley. All right, discussion on this? Who's that? Mr. Gertie?
Patrick Gertie, District Four. What is the consideration on maintenance on something like this down the road? I think it's a great idea. It gives other people in town in Norwood a place to go and sit and relax with their kids. But five years from now, what's it going to look like if nothing gets maintained on it?
Mr. Greeley?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. One of the requirements of the Community Preservation Act is that the projects have to be standalone projects, meaning essentially what you're voting on the project installation or implementation, and then in out-years, the funding for maintenance or additions or whatever have to be handled some other way. In this case, the Conservation Commission is committed to maintaining them and keeping this facility looking as, as good as it will on day one. None of those funds will come from the operating funds unless there's some significant alteration that needs to be done down the road, which currently is not contemplated.
Follow-up, Mr. Gertie?
So down the road, that means the Conservation Committee group is going to need budgeting to maintain items like this?
Who's going to take that? Ms. Doyle?
Hi, yes. Cheryl Doyle, District Seven, Conservation Commission. We always have a maintenance budget to start with in regards to all of our property. But the way this structure is done, it's basically maintenance-free. On how it's done, we did a lot of homework, and it took us a while to pick a company because we needed the lowest maintenance possible for it.
All right. Can I ask the board to keep this microphone on, please? Or is it, have we lost it? All right, back on. Mr. Brody?
Steve Brody, District Four. Now, I know where this is. How many people would really be using this? How much of a benefit to the town would this really be? Because this is way off of Route 1A, and I don't see any people on the other park that is on 1A opposite the, opposite the Alice Pond.
Who's? Ms. Morgan?
Hello, everyone. Ramonda, I am the Secretary for our Conservation Commission. I actually just want to speak to really quickly the previous question regarding the maintenance. This structure comes with a 10-year warranty by the company, The Barnyard, that will be doing the onsite installation. So there'll be no required maintenance that we would have to come out of, basically out of pocket for the next 10 years. But any other maintenance as far as landscaping, which we do every year to that area, we do, you know, installing annuals and plants, will come out of the regular conservation budget. But we don't foresee any out-of-pocket expenses for any upkeep because there is a full 10-year warranty on the pavilion.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Mr. Brody's question had to do with whether there's been any determination of what the likely usage will be? Is that correct, Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have an answer on that?
Well, like any other park or playground in Norwood, there's really no way, there's nobody there with a ticker keeping track of how many people come and go from the property. But it is a very underutilized area right now, and we're trying to actually bring more people to the area and make them more aware of the conservation properties that we do have in town. And we want to make it more accessible and nicer for people to go out and then actually use the property. Right now, on the other side of the property, which is facing Wallpole Street, there is a butterfly garden. We do have ADA-compliant picnic tables out there now, so we're definitely trying to draw more people in. But there's really no way to gauge how many people will be utilizing it. The pavilion's not that large. It's a 20 by 30-foot structure. It fits approximately 40 people standing under it, so it's not a very large pavilion, but it does add a feature to the property, and we're definitely hoping to draw more people in.
I have a follow-on through you. I'd like to ask Mrs. Esco, who lives on Endicott Street, what her feeling is of this project, please.
We really don't start taking polls here of our, our friends and neighbors. I know that Ms. Esco had her hand up a moment ago. At least, I thought I saw that. And I'm happy to call on her in a moment, but I'll do the calling. Mr. Brody?
I guess what-
Do you have a follow-up?
Well, I'm interested in how the neighbors on Endicott Street feel about this project, if they have any opinion at all.
All right. When do we find out? Mrs. Esco? Thank you, Mr. Brody.
Tony Esco, District Five. Thank you for your polite concern. I actually went to a couple of the CPA meetings when they were discussing this, as we do live right across the street from this. And I can tell you that vehicles and trucks often park across the street from our house because it's a tiny piece of shade there, and they might stop to check a map, a phone, have lunch. One of the, one of the uses of this land now can be that there will be a respite area, some shade. That's one of the things that makes the land a little less attractive is that when the sun is out, there's, there's no place to find relief in the summertime. So the pavilion actually adds the shade, and as I understand it, a couple picnic tables fit inside there. In terms of its use, though, the corner of the street has a 24-unit condominium. That was an apartment-to-condo conversion. And I know residents there would use it. And also, at the end of my street, on the left-hand side, the former Zimble property is now 112 condo complex. It's about 75, 80% built out. And there are quite a few children down there already that I've noticed. So, and adults, too, besides children. So I can see this being used a lot more. And I know some people might not be aware of this piece of property. You do see it when you drive on 1A. But the lot actually wraps around that condo onto Endicott Street. It's like an L shape. So I, I, I think it will be used a lot more. And now cars, instead of parking immediately across my street, can be a little bit further inside the property as they build these six parking spaces, as I'm told they will. And the handicap accessibility will be a nice addition. The one concern we have as residents is, you know, trash. There's, there is one, one barrel near the brook, but I think you could use one closer to the pavilion because I think people will picnic there and eat there. And sometimes people won't walk 30 feet to a barrel, so it has to be right there. And I do want to, I do want to add thanks about solar lighting because there is some light on that property at night. There is a, a pole. And so, you know, any kinds of unattractive activity later on at night would be a concern. But we'd keep an eye on that. Overall, I think it's an attractive use of the land, as you call it, a pocket park. And I think people will be surprised that it's, that it's there because it's just not used enough right now because it's just too hot in the summertime. Oh, yes, I should, I want to say that, too, actually. Public Works, they are so vigilant in the summertime. And when I see them, I thank them. Every single day, there's a trash barrel by the brook. And every day, I think it is, they come and they change the liner in that barrel. they come and they change the liner in that barrel, and I thank them because if you don't and the animals go after it, it's an open trash can, if you don't change it, it just becomes an unsightly area of trash and critters. So that's real important, and I want to thank the Public Works, they're really great about that in the summertime. So I look forward to it. If there's any problems with it, I would kindly let people know and, but, but thank you and I hope, I hope it ends up being a really enjoyable pocket park for people. And I thank the CPA for all their work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esco. All right. Mr. Giode?
Tom Giode, District 6. As soon as the butterfly area opened up, my wife and I went over there, and I'm really excited about this development. My question is, is it possible that that pavilion could be reserved for a private function?
This is, is this going to be within the control of the Conservation Commission once it's built? All right, Ms. Morgan?
Yes. We had talked about having a program modeled after the Board of Selectmen, how they reserve the gazebo. People can reserve it in advance, and then we've obviously put out signs saying it's reserved for the day, but right now, it would be the same thing as the selectmen have for the gazebo in the common, so we're hoping to have that going once the pavilion goes up and we, you know, get a feel for how it, you know, people are calling in for it. But yes, we absolutely would be looking into having that as an option for residents.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Taylor?
Jack Taylor, District 8. Mr. Moderator, right, call the question.
All right. Mr. Taylor has moved the question, seconded by Mr. Connolly. On moving the question, requiring a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The question has been moved. So we now proceed to vote on the third motion under Article 15, which proposes $46,965 from the Open Space and Recreational Use of Land Reserve for the Lower Pond Pavilion. On that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. And is this the last motion, on this article, Mr. Slater?
Correct, Mr. Moderator.
All right. You want to present the motion?
Will do. Thank you. Recommended by the Finance Commission, voted based upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the Finance Commission moves that the following sums be transferred from Community Preservation Fund revenues and appropriated for the purposes indicated: Carolon Restoration, project amount $215,000, source of funding $66,680 CPF Historic Resources, and $148,316 CPF Unreserved Fund Balances.
Thank you. Mr. Greeley?
Ms. Moderator, so basically, the Carolon is one of those hidden gems that a lot of people hear it if they're walking across the Town Common, but I would certainly invite people to go check it out on one of the times, days and times, when it is available for a tour. It is pretty amazing, once you get back, get up to the top of the steeple, but it requires a little bit of legwork. It's not quite one of Norwood's famous trails, but it could be someday. Some of the, some of these photos, the Carolon was built in, as part of the Town Hall, it was installed as part of the Town Hall construction. It goes back to, dedicated in 1928. The last major work that was performed on it was in 1984 periodically, and it, frankly, this kind of work should be done more frequently. Obviously, we're talking about 35 years ago, roughly, the last time any work, any significant work was done. There is annual maintenance that's done to the tune of a couple, to the tune of a couple thousand dollars, but this kind of work happens, it happens rarely, but frankly, it needs to happen on a, on a periodic basis. Some of the photos you'll see, there are 50, 50, the project proponents right here, Lee Leach, Bernie Cooper is also the co-project proponent, and there's 50 bells in the, in the steeple. The third slide, so there's some photos there. Again, I would invite anybody to take a tour. The third slide details the project finances to, that sum up to $215,000 even. And Mr. Leach is here to answer any specific questions.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley. All right. On this, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. The motion, the fourth of the four motions under Article 15, deals with Carolon Restoration, proposed amount, $215,000, a portion of it coming from Historic Resources, the balance from Unreserved Fund Balances, and the amounts were up on the, are up on the board now. On that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That motion has carried. Now, Mr. Connolly, you told me you were going to make a motion at 9:30, you're making it now at about 10:45. What happened?
I did not consider my oath of Mr. Greeley. I said the motion to dissolve.
Motion to dissolve by Mr. Connolly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. On the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. We are done. Thank you all. Good night. Happy summer.